With a roll called, waiting for our member to get here and Vice Mayor, please be ready to read through through our continuous meeting as well, okay? So this is the agenda for special legislative meeting of the Mayor and City Council, City of Mount Rainier today, Tuesday, February 21st. At 7:00 PM, this is a virtual meeting and we'll be calling a call to order. Councilmember's office.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tarlo.
Here.
And Councilmember Cheswick. Cheswick is not here right now, but once he comes in, we'll make sure to register him in, okay? So, um, so we do have a full quorum. We have a quorum of four to five right now, waiting for a fifth person. So we're going to move to the second part of item number one, the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice Mayor, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah, absolutely. Sir, can we mute?
Can I ask everybody that's here to please mute their mic except for the Vice Mayor? Si están aquí, por favor, se les pide que pongan su mic en no sonido, por favor, para así asegurar que podamos continuar con la agenda. Y también quiero, so Councilmember Cheswick is also here, please make and add it to the agenda as well, so we have a full forum. Okay? Thank you, Lucas, well, all right, Jared, the floor is yours, please lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Item number two is the review of the agenda, that's allocated five minutes. The Mayor and Council review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest of discussion. Councilmember, we have three meetings today. We have a special legislation meeting, followed by a hearing and followed by a regular work session.
Results of the.
One after the other one. We are going to take a small pause after the hearing, depending how long the legislative session goes, to make sure we could grab water as well. So at this moment, Vice Mayor, can you please go ahead and read the agenda for the record?
Absolutely. Agenda of the special legislative meeting of the Mayor and City Council, City of Mount Rainier, Tuesday, February 21st, 2023, 7:00 PM, virtual meeting. Number one, call to order, Pledge of Allegiance. Number two, review of the agenda, five minutes, the Mayor and Council review the agenda for the meeting, adding and deleting topics of interest of discussion. Number three, introduction by Congressman Glenn Ivy's office. Community liaison, Mr. Ethan Sweep will make an introduction to the Mayor and Council on behalf of Congressman Glenn Ivy's office. Number four, public comment. Number five, discussion and vote on ordinance number 10-2022, rent stabilization. The Mayor and Council will have a discussion and vote on ordinance number 10-2022, rent stabilization. Number six, discussion and vote on the appointment to the Ethics Commission. The Mayor and Council will discuss and vote on appointing Ms. Sally Baumfalk to the Ethics Commission. Number seven, discussion and vote on the reappointment to the Board of Elections. The Mayor and Council will discuss and vote on the reappointment of Ms. Nicole Logan, Ms. Ophelia Baxter, Ms. Tara Graham, Mr. Mario Sisneros, Mr. Carl Jones, and Mr. Thomas Del鲁 to the Board of Elections. Number eight, adjournment.
All right, thank you so much. This has been a fair summary of the agenda, Council. I need to know if you move forward with approving this agenda or if you need to delete or add any items of the agenda at this moment.
So move the agenda.
Thank you, Jimmy, so moved, is there a second?
Seconded.
Is it properly moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, any objection? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, we have a working agenda, thank you guys so much. So moving on to item number three, introduction of Congressman Glenn Ivy's office. The community liaison, Mr. Ethan Sweep will make an introduction to Mayor and Council and the community on behalf of Congresswoman Glenn Ivy's office. Ethan, I just saw you here, go ahead and open your mic and it's a pleasure to have you in our meeting. And I know Glenn has been very involved in making sure he's outreaching to the community, so it's great to have you here, so welcome.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mayor Benidas, and thank you for having me, Mayor and Council. So for those who don't know me, my name is Ethan Sweep and I am a community liaison with Congressman Glenn Ivy. So I'm here tonight just to introduce myself to you and everyone in this meeting and let you know that our office is here to help. You can contact us through our website, ivehouse.gov, or stop by the office. But we would prefer, you know, sending an email and not just dropping in. But we are always, always here to help, especially you, Mayor and Council, as you try to serve your constituents well. I do want to talk a little bit about our grants newsletter that's going to be coming out. So that is going to be coming out very, very soon. We are in the final touches of getting it set up. Mayor and Council, you will all be automatically enrolled in it, or at least you should be. And what that is going to have is information on available federal grants that are out there. It's also going to have grant resources and some webinars that we're setting up with specific departments on how to write better grants. So we can help equip you guys with the tools that you need to land some of these grants and get that money into your community. Soon as well, hopefully, we will be having our community funded project grants process started. This is a grants process traditionally, or I guess in the past known as earmarks, if you've heard about that. It's done through the House Appropriations Process. And we do not yet know how much money is going to be available, or if it's going to be available, that's up to the leadership and the Republican led House to decide. But information as we get it will be in the grants newsletter, so that will be the place for you to stay up to date on that. We are still, again, I really want to stress, we're still waiting on guidance for fiscal year 2024. So we don't have any information yet on the program, but we'd love to set up a meeting with you, Mayor, Council, talk about some projects that you have in mind. See if there is anything we can help out with in that regard. So with that, I guess I will put my information here in the chat so that everyone has it. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. I'm going to open up the floor to Mayor, to the rest of the Council, to see if they have any questions, but we definitely are happy to have you here. And you know, we're definitely going to apply for those grants because we want to make sure every cent is brought up to the City of Mount Rainier for support. All right, so Luke, the mic is yours, followed by Jimmy, Valerie and Jared, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Ethan, just bring us a ton of money and we're cool. So that's it, that's all we're going to ask, so just bring us a lot of money and we're cool. If not, we may have some problems, other than that, we're, we'll be okay.
We'll do what we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. Jimmy?
I'm loving it, thank you for coming, we look forward to working with the Congressman.
Thank you so much, Valerie.
Sam, thank you very much for coming and presenting, and I look forward to working with you on federal earmarks, thank you.
Perfect, Jared?
I know, Ethan, thanks for coming tonight, we're excited to work with Congressman Glenn Ivy, excited to work with you, really appreciate you coming out so early in the Congressman's term and outreaching to us and excited to work with you on issues that affect the district and bringing in resources to help make a great place even better. Thank you.
Yeah.
So thank you. If any community members have a quick question for Ethan, let us know, we put it on the chat and we'll go ahead and read it. Or also, Ethan has put his email and phone number on, they will be happy to share it. Usually our newsletter, we save a spot to make sure our community members know how to reach their representatives as well. So we'll be sharing that information as well through our links of information, okay? And I'm not seeing nothing, so Ethan, have a great night and we look forward to continue meeting and booking that meeting with you and getting plenty of grants to the City of Mount Rainier.
Absolutely, thank you all, you have a great night.
Say goodnight, thank you so much. So moving on to item number four, this is open for public comment. Melissa, can you move up the agenda part of the public comment, please? So the public comment is open for items that are being brought up to Mayor and Council. We usually ask that if the item is not on the agenda, this will be the place for you to also talk about it. If it's on the agenda, we please ask you to wait until the item is mentioned, unless you really have to go and you want to put in public comment, it's also welcome. If you're an individual, you have three minutes to speak. If you represent a group, you have five minutes to speak. If you're representing a group, you forfeit the time of your other members to speak and you have to be a recognized, a recognized representative for that body. The Mayor and Council will hear your concerns or your questions, comments for those three to five minutes in order for us to, you know, take notes and get back to you. Please make sure you state your block and street number. As an example, 4300 block of 34th Street will be an example in your name for the record. All right, so if you have an item that you'd like to speak on public comment, please go ahead, put your name and last name on the chat and I'll go ahead and call on you. And if you're on Facebook, please write your comment, we'll go ahead and read it. And if you're on the phone, alert me and we'll be happy to include your comment as well on the record. So is there's anybody from the community that wishes to speak on public comment? Please let us know. And in the meantime, Jared, is there anything on Facebook?
No comments on Facebook.
Okay, perfect, so I see Linda Green, Linda, are you speaking on behalf of any item that's on the agenda or another item? Linda Green?
Yeah, rent stabilization.
Okay, so that item is on the agenda following public hearing, we want to wait for the comment then, or you'd like to speak now?
I'll wait.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much, Linda, she'll be the first one of the speakers. Ryan, I see you here, would you like to speak now or during the line item for rent stabilization?
I can wait till we reach the line item, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And those are dealing to, I have, so Linda, followed by Ryan. So if you are going to be speaking on the rent stabilization, that is the next item, please make sure you start writing your name and last name and we'll call you up in the order that, that I see. Okay, and if any chances I don't see it, let me know, raise your hand, okay? All right, so seeing that there is no other, nobody else that would like to speak during public comment, because they are going to be moving their comments to the item itself. Hearing nothing from Facebook on the phone or on the chat, we will officially close public comment at this moment, okay? So moving on to old business, item number five, discussion and vote on ordinance number 10-2022, rent stabilization, 30 minutes are allocated. The Mayor and Council will have a discussion and vote on ordinance 10-2022, rent stabilization. This is the second reading and it's going up for vote. If you choose to speak, first round is going to be, is, I'm sorry, if you choose to speak, you have three minutes to speak in the item above, and we'll go ahead, it's going to be three minutes uninterrupted and we'll let you say your piece. All right, so we're going to go ahead and you see, I'm going to go through first our rent stabilization, this is more like a cleaner copy, but it was basically the same one as we mentioned last time. So here it is, City of Mount Rainier, ordinance 10-2022, and the amenity is under, under line station after the introduction. All right, so can you scroll down, save the things where, where, where asked here, freeze. Says according to the latest data from the US Census, the City of Mount Rainier has a total of 3,720 housing units, 3,460 being occupied. And whereas according to the latest data from the Census, renters occupy 2,680 units, which equals to 77.5% of the city dueling units, okay? Whereas according to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, fair market rent dollar amount below which the rent for 40% standard quality rental housing units falls in the Washington Arlington, Alexandria area, which includes Prince George's County, is 1,765 for a two-bedroom apartment and there you go, a small firm market ran for two-bedroom housing in Mount Rainier, stepco tool, same one, two, equates to, sorry, that looks very little. 24.62 hourly wage or 49,240 annual wage, and that's the data link for it. Okay, so moving on to it, it gives the data or what what the city looks like according to the latest data from the Brewers, 48.8% of the renters to the City of Mount Rainier pay more than 35% of their household income for the rent. All right, keep going, keep going, keep going. Okay, so now therefore be it ordained and enacted, the rent stabilization ordinance for, it will be fall under chapter 3D. And you'll see the subsegments keep going, Melissa. There, oh, there you go. So that gives you a run through as we read before, who will fall under rent stabilization. And at the same time, what extensions aren't it, so it says right here, things are underlined it. The community is impacted by housing instability when rent increases outpace the incomes. The welfare of the persons who live in Mount Rainier is depending upon the access to affordable housing. Rent increases have outpaced wages over the last few decades. Rent increases in the city have outpaced the consumer price index for the region, including Mount Rainier. Rent needs protection for exorbitant rent increases. On section 3D, 102, the word was, we had an exclamation point on the E, a hyphenation, right, so it's definition, so that's the only thing that was changed, one, one letter. Right there, thank you. The term rent stabilization allowance means 60% of the consumer price index, or CPI, multiplied by the rent charged in the last calendar year preceding that proposed increase, or if the unit is vacant, but was previously rented, 60% of the CPI multiplied by the rent that could have been charged had the unit been occupied in the preceding calendar year, the city should publish the rent stabilization allowance on its website. The rent stabilization board, the City of Mount Rainier Rent Stabilization Board established, the board should consist of five members appointed by the council, at least three of whom should be tenants, at least one who should be a landlord or property manager, at least one should be a homeowner. Authority, the board empowered to rule on petitions for rent increases about the rest of the station allowance in accordance with this chapter. See qualifications of board members should reside in the city, except that of the landlord or property owner members may reside outside the city. Each member of the board should be appointed for a term of three years and should serve until the term expires. All their successors are appointed whichever is later, latter. A board member who resides whose term expires or who ceased to reside in Mount Rainier may, at discretion of the board chairperson, continue as an inactive member of the board to complete work under cases on which he or she may participate. As an active member of the board, this participation might include the approval of or signing of the board opinions and orders. Removal, the council may by resolution remove a board member before board member's term is expired, council determines that the board member has become incapacitated or has felt satisfactory to perform his or her duties as a board member or as violated chapter of 1D, Ethics of this code. So the part that was crossed out was board instead of board member, who you went to hide, Melissa. Um, there you go, same thing for that board, board member instead of board. The board should lecture person vice chairman for, it says for one-year term or until their succession are elected, whichever last occurs. Okay, so keep going, that was basically still stays the same. Thank you, thank you. There you go for that one. For B, we cross out, instead of exception, we put adjustments, the rest of the station law should be made only when the landlord demonstrates that such adjustments are necessary to provide the landlord with a fair return on investment. Keep going. Right there, freeze. It says 30 days of rent to your unit must stay in tenant for consecutive period, show total more than 30 days. Subject to the unit to their instructions of rent increase set forth in this chapter. Okay, rental registry. The city shall create and maintain a public accessible rental registry containing illegal rental units within the City of Mount Rainier, within the city and indicating which units are subject to rent stabilization, the rent registry should publish and post it in the city webpage. And the renter's property must be in the rental registry. Landowners may not raise the rent for unregistered properties and attempt to do so is, is a municipal infraction, subject to penalties set forth in section 3-106 of this chapter. All right, there is the information for the rental registry, name, address, property, unit. What was, it was the date on which property was first offered for lease, the day of the current lease began. And we cross out, our property just left it as multifamily. Let me see, the name, mailing address, phone number, and email address of landlord management and statement of whether the property's rent stabilized. Number four, providing false information relating to the registration is a municipal infraction, subject to penalty set forth coming on 106 of this chapter. Okay, keep going, Melissa, go, 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 right there, we're almost there, thank you. To assist in covering the administration, please, the city associated with the rental registry and other provisions of this chapter, the city should annually collect a fee from the owners of all registered rental units and determine it is annual fee or annanns. See right there, oops, sorry. Beginning on March 1st, 2023, and unless altered in connection with the annual budget. The fee shall be $50 per unit per rental properties with four or more units, $25 per unit per rental property within three or four units. And if it is, but be it further ordained, the, the council of City of Mount Rainier that this ordinance is adopted by, by the, by the Council of City of Mount Rainier on the day and it should take effect, blank, provided, that is a fair summary has been read and this is the first summary that's been read. All right, so you guys have heard a fair summary of ordinance 10-2023 that was in front of you. Okay, and we are going to go to the list of, so we're first gonna, Council, would you guys like to the audience first, or do you guys, you guys want to hear testimony and speak up first? Would that work for you guys?
I defer, I like to hear the witnesses first and then comment and make, you know, discussion after the witnesses, witnesses the method of talk.
Thank you, Council, can you, can you, I see, I hear Jared, I hear Jimmy, Valerie and Luke, we're good with that?
Yeah, Mayor, I would just recommend one more thing, and I'm sorry if you missed it, but just section 3D, 106. B, we had discussed this last time, but it's in there now, that the rental properties that are less than 15 years old would, would, the, the the rent stabilization bill would not apply to those, so that's, that's on there now, we talked about it last night, but just making sure we flag that, and then I'm good with letting the witnesses, the residents and anyone else talk first.
Perfect, Melissa, can you put it up in the screen? That was added, that was added in the original and we make sure it was added in the last one, so thank you for pointing that out.
Mount Rainier is finalizing their bill on rent stabilization.
I think we, please make sure that you have our mics closed, please. There you go, keep going, is the exceptions, Melissa.
Right, right there.
Thank you so much, Luke, so that's B, rental properties that are less than 15-year-old, rent stabilization will not apply to them. And we do have a few properties in the city that are less than 15 years old and, you know, and future properties come will fall under that one as well. Okay, we got it covered, Luke, good? Okay, so we are going to do something a little bit different, which basically we will go ahead and have the audience speak. We definitely really appreciate it, okay? So we're going to go first with Ms. Linda Green, Linda, the floor is here, you have three minutes to speak. Please let us know what your street and block number is and you have three uninterrupted minutes to speak, go ahead.
Thank you, Linda Green, I live on 3100 block of Barnum Street in Mount Rainier. We've lived here for over 40 years and our kids have grown up now and went to Thomas Stone years ago. There are three points I want to make. One is that as a public health person and physician, I've been very involved in studying things like the social determinants of health. And it's clear that housing heads the list. And in the group that I'm active with now, Public Health Awakened, housing is our number one priority and we're active in the county on this as well. And in the state, in terms of legislation. Secondly, from a personal point of view, a couple of things. One is that one of our babysitters, when the kids were young, was able to rent in Mount Rainier and help us take care of our kids and provide childcare while we were working, both of us were working at that time. And it was, it was really wonderful and I think this is a great, a great opportunity for many people who live in this, in Mount Rainier to be able to work in the city as well. I do, we do own a home on Barnum Street. The third thing is that personally, my kids went to Thomas Stone, they were able to meet international students from many countries at that time, and they got a wonderful education here. And I think that this, this kind of community is just the best that there is, and I'd hate to see it turned into a gentrified DC area or anything like that by raising rents. So I think this is very important. The last point is that I did participate for a while with the Hyattsville and Mount Rainier groups, looking at rent stabilization, and I'm really excited to see this policy. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Linda, and thank you also for your work in the community. I know it goes on for many years and this subject is something that has been discussed and brought up several times as well. I know it, it goes on for, um, many years, and this subject is something that has been, um, discussed and brought up, uh, several, several times as well. All right, so moving on to Ryan Washington, uh, from A Oba. Uh, he is the lobbyist of firm, um, for the apartment buildings. So Ryan, can you please let people know what A Oba is? And, um, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I can let the, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, Madam, uh, uh, Mayor. Uh, I can let the proponents of the bill go first, and then we got a long list of proponents, so I don't mind letting them go first.
The, the floor is yours right now, because the list is long. Go ahead.
No, I, I, I have no worries. Uh.
All right, so you're, you're sitting in your space. Okay? All right, but can you let us know what A Oba is? Because I've, I've had that question, and I think you, you could better describe what A Oba is.
Sure, uh, after, I, I'll let the proponents of the bill speak. I know, uh, it's a long list. I have no, uh, issues waiting.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to the next side. Melissa, do me a favor. Can you mark that the three-minute mark? That will help me. Okay? All right, so moving on to, I do have, uh, Joel, Joel, um, Joel, I'm so sorry if I'm gonna butcher your last name. Guilt, guilty? Uh, guilty, guilty, he's here. You will find him under the, the E then name. He does apologize for that, but he's here to speak. Go ahead, Joel.
Uh, good evening. My name is Joel Kelty, J O E L K E L T Y. I own a small apartment building in the thirty-one hundred block of Varnum Street in Mount Rainier. And as outlined in my prior correspondence to the mayor and the council, I believe that the proposed ordinance is unnecessary, will not achieve its intended purpose, and will have unintended adverse consequences, not only for small landlords like me, but also for the renters that this legislation is designed to protect. Um, I've already outlined why I oppose rent stabilization in general. Tonight, I wanna focus on a few deficiencies in the proposed ordinance. Uh, the first is that the, the, the data provided in the preamble of the ordinance is inaccurate and misleading. Uh, there's a real hodgepodge of numbers and data to try to build a case for why this is necessary. But just as an example, the, the legislation lists the HUD fair market rent for the region as seventeen sixty-five. That's one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars per month. In reality, th- that includes rents in other higher rent areas such as Arlington and Alexandria in DC. We should be using the HUD small area fair market rent, which for two oh seven one two is one thousand three hundred and twenty. The rent stabilization allowance, uh, the rent stabilization law also disincentivizes maintenance of existing properties and will disincentivize new investment. Um, only allowing an increase of sixty percent of the rate of inflation, you know, I'm using that as a short term for CPI, um, basically means that landlords are gonna continually be losing money year over year and won't be able to keep up with the cost of inflation. Even DC recognizes this and uses, uh, a variation on CPI plus two percent for their rent control program. Um, CPI is actually not the appropriate, um, tool to use for this sort of thing anyway, because it includes all kinds of costs that aren't related to housing, and even the shelter component of CPI uses, includes things like transient housing, like hotels, and that's what's driving the, the shelter component up. Uh, lastly, uh, the draft ordinance is vague, ambiguous. The rent stabilization registry is duplicative. Um, and there's really no basis for the fee that's proposed. There's been no analysis of what this will cost to implement. Um, and, and the city already has a list of all the landlords, um, and they already get a rental license fee, which should more than cover any administrative costs. I, you know, I'm sympathetic to the, to the, the plight of people who've had their rent increased. I never increased my rents ever until I found out about this law, and then I immediately had to increase the rents um, for fear that I would be stuck in a, in a spiraling downward trend that would eventually end up in bankruptcy and the loss of my eight units to the rental market. I urge you to oppose this legislation, barring that, at least put it off, collect some real data, en- engage those of us who are in the business and have expertise in this matter. Um, and also the last thing is the board with three rent, uh, tenant, uh, members and only one landlord is basically stacked against landlords. It's patently unfair. Um, and I urge you to reconsider how you constitute that board as well as the overall, um, notion. I'm, I'm trying to go within my three minutes. I'll stop there. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Uh, Melissa, you could definitely put it in the chat so that where the speaker knows how much time they have left, okay? Because you just sent it to me, but that will make it over. So, um, please try to stick to your three minutes. Um, usually you like wrap up your few last sentences, but I think that is important that we, we stick to the, we honor the three minutes, please. All right, so we are gonna move on to Gilma Chacon at thirty-three thirty-two Buchanan, uh, Road. Uh, uh, Gilma, um, el, el, el piso es tuyo park, el micrófono es tuyo park, que puedes hablar. So Gilma's here. And Casa, can you help us with translation, please?
Yes, I am on the line, and I will be translating.
Thank you so much, because it's, it's hard to conduct a meeting and, and translate. Not impossible, Bahar. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Gilma, usted está en mudo ahorita.
Okay. Buenas noches. Les damos las gracias a todos por estar aquí. Mi nombre es Gilma Chacon y vivo en el treinta y tres, treinta y dos, Buchanan Street, apartamento dos cero uno. Llevo seis años viviendo en la ciudad de Monreiner y mi renta es de mil seiscientos treinta y cinco. Y mi aumento fue de ochenta dólares y viles. He vivido en Monreiner. Esta ciudad ha sido buena para nosotros. A mis niños les gusta la escuela y quieren quedarme aquí. Le gusta el ambiente porque tienen amigos y eso es bueno para ellos, pero ya no es justo estos altos aumentos para todos nosotros, los inquilinos.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Gilma Chacon. I live in Mount Rainier, where I have lived for the last six years. My rent right now is over a thousand six hundred dollars, and my last increase was of over eighty dollars. Our kids, myself, my family, we love this community here in Mount Rainier. Um, they've adapted to the school. They have their friends here, and that is a big factor of why we live here in the city.
Puede continuar, Gilma. Ya no los ajustan lo que gana mi esposo porque yo no puedo trabajar por mis condiciones de salud. Finalmente les pido a la alcaldesa y a los concejales que así como nosotros les hemos dado nuestros votos que ahora nosotros, nosotros necesitamos del, del respaldo. Por favor, es urgente que esta ley de estabilización de renta que ya estamos en un año más y ya mucho lo que hemos, ellos hacen y es escuchado. Mis vecinos, sus aumentos y también ahora les pagan, pagamos viles de agua porque luz todo por separado es demasiado. Lo que están haciendo con nosotros, piense en nosotros, los inquilinos somos muchos. La ciudad de Monreine y no queremos los incrementos de renta altas. Por favor, pasen una ley. Ya es de estabilización de renta ya. Gracias.
I wanna tell the mayor and council, um, that, you know, I want you guys to vote in favor of this legislation the same way we voted in favor of you guys. We need your vote on this. Unfortunately, because of health conditions, I cannot work, and what my husband makes is becoming something hard, you know, to pay rent with what he makes. Please vote for rent stabilization. We really need this. It's, you know, every year our rents go up. Now we're being charged for extra, um, utilities. Please help us out and pass rent stabilization. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Agradezco muchísimo a la alcaldesa y al concilio por haber escuchado nuestras preocupaciones y, and demandas a llevar adelante esta ley de estabilización de renta es, que es muy necesaria. Gracias, Selena Benitez.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for hearing our concerns and pushing this rent stabilization law. Thank you, Mayor Selena Benitez.
Gracias a ustedes por estar aquí. Uh, Melissa, give him a little more time, because translation takes a little bit longer. Okay? All right, so, um, I have on the list next. Tenemos en la lista en estos momentos, um, Ada Rodriguez, so Ada Rodriguez of Queenstown will be, is our next speaker on deck. So Ada, puedes empezar a, a dar tu testimonio.
Okay, buenas noches, um, a todos los que están en el grupo. Mi nombre es Ada Merlos de Rodríguez. Vivo en la ciudad de Monreiner, eh, treinta y dos, sesenta y tres, Queenstown Drive. Pues este, damos el mismo testimonio, pero ahora yo le voy a cambiar y le voy a decir lo que está pasando, que es demasiado la renta que están trepando. Y no es que uno no pueda llegar a pagar la renta, pero este, la verdad es que los trabajos están muy bajos. Entonces este, uno se asusta con la renta que le están aumentando, y lo que queremos es que estabilicen la renta para uno estar, este, estable y estar más tranquilo. Nos gusta la ciudad porque tenemos ya, yo ya voy, llevo para dieciocho años estando acá y nos gusta, es cierto de que, y lo que queremos es también que ta, que no los vayan a sacar así de la noche a la mañana y nosotros, este, nos quedemos sin techo. Entonces, este, eso es lo que también nosotros queremos en estos momentos y que nos apoyen con todo.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Ada Merlos Rodríguez. I have been a resident here in Mount Rainier for eighteen years. I am here, you know, you guys have seen me share my story, but I'm here once again because I wanna continue telling you guys that we need rent stabilization. Right now, a lot of jobs, you know, aren't paying as much as, as people deserve to be making to pay rent. Minimum wage is not easy to survive on. Uh, my husband and I, you know, we've been living in the city for eighteen years because we like it. We love this community. We have made this our home, and we wanna continue living here. And what we need for that is for rents to be stable and for us to know what our rents are gonna be and not for rent increases to push us out of our homes.
Y entonces agradezco muchísimo, uh, muchísimo a la alcaldía y al concilio por.
Estás en mudo, Ada. Ahí está, ya empezó el micrófono.
Uh, les agradezco muchísimo a la alcaldesa y al concilio por haber escuchado nuestras preocupaciones y nuestras peticiones, demandas, y llevar adelante esta ley de estabilización de renta y que es muy necesaria. Y les agradezco mucho de que nos escuchen. Y a usted, Selena, le agradezco muchísimo que estuvo en un momento muy lindo cuando le robaron el carro a mi hijo, que usted lo escuchó la petición y por usted lo escucharon en la oficina. Le agradezco infinitamente, y no se lo había dicho, pero hoy si se lo digo, que Dios me la vendía grandemente, y en todo caso que ustedes tengan cualquier cosa, estamos con usted.
Mayor and Council, I wanna thank you guys for, um, you know, having pushed this issue on rent stabilization and bringing it to a vote. I also wanna thank, you know, Mayor Benitez for having helped me in a personal situation where my son's car was stolen, and, you know, I really appreciate you as a mayor, and may God bless.
Gracias y bendiciones a ustedes también. Um, moviendo a la siguiente persona sería, um, Rosa de treinta y tres, tercero ocho de Chauncey, y después seguiría Blanca de treinta y dos, cincuenta y ocho de Queenstown. A Rosa, el micrófono es tuyo.
Okay, gracias. Uh, buenas tardes, alcaldesa y concilio. Desde ya les digo gracias por darnos el espacio en sus reuniones. Mi nombre es Rosa Mejía. Soy madre soltera. Tengo quince años en este país y vivo en la treinta y tres, cero ocho, Chauncey Play. Tengo dos años en la ciudad. Mi renta es de mil quinientos, y cuando me tocó renovar, mi aumento fue más de cien dólares, y es injusto.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, and Council. First of all, I just wanna say thank you to you guys for giving us the space to be in these meetings and stating our concerns. I'm here to speak today in favor of this law of rent stabilization. I've been in the city for two years now, and my last rent increase was over a hundred dollars, and I don't think that was fair.
Y venimos hoy a ustedes a hacernos presente. Que seguimos en la lucha de que pasen una ley de estabilización de renta y que ya empezamos un nuevo año, y no sabemos cómo viene el aumento. Para muchos que ya nos va a tocar renovar y muchos no podemos con esos aumentos, les pedimos que por favor pasen esta ley que tanto necesitamos y que en sus manos está hacerlo. Gracias y Dios los bendiga.
I'm here, you know, I wanna make it known that I want rent stabilization to pass. Our families need this, our communities need this legislation, and you guys have the power to pass this. It's a bright, the year is beginning for a lot of us, and a lot of us are already receiving rent increases that make us, you know, think if we wanna be here or if we can be here. Please help us out and pass rent stabilization. Thank you.
Agradezco muchísimo a la alcaldesa y al concilio por haber escuchado nuestras preocupaciones y demandas y llevar adelante esta ley de estabilización de renta que es, que es muy necesaria.
I wanna thank the mayor and council for pushing this legislation, um, this rent stabilization legislation that is very needed.
Okay, so, uh, Council, um, I got a message from our clerk saying we're running out of time. Can you guys please add twenty more minutes to the clock?
So moved.
Mayor, I think that's not realistic. Why we had a half hour?
Thank you, Jimmy. Can we do thirty minutes, um, thirty minutes on the clock?
So moved.
It's been properly moved. Any seconds? Second of, it's been second by, um, Council, what, any discussion, objection, extension? Here none. Um, Melissa, you have thirty minutes added once we ran out of the first, um, the first allocated time. Okay, thank you. All right, so, um, el, el micrófono es tuyo, disculpen. Estábamos poniendo más tiempo para poder escuchar todos los testigos. So we were adding more time to make sure that Mayor and Council will hear all the testimonies in front of us. Okay, so, um, la, la próxima persona que va a hablar va a ser Blanca de treinta y dos, cincuenta y ocho, Queenstown, y le sigue Ivette. Go ahead.
Buenas tardes, alcaldesa y concilio. Mi nombre es Blanca Torres. Tengo tres años en la ciudad de Monrein. Y vivo en la treinta y dos, cincuenta y ocho, Queenstown Drive, y mi renta es de mil trescientos ochenta más viles.
Good evening, yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Blanca. I have been living in Mount Rainier, and I am here today to speak in favor of rent stabilization.
Soy madre soltera, tengo tres hijos y ellos les gustan. Se siente bien y al moverse de un lugar a otro no les hace bien. Y mi trabajo ha bajado desde la pandemia. No alcanzo lo que llegano, y la, los aumentos no son justos. Por esta razón vengo a ustedes.
I am a single mother of three, and what I make right now is not enough. My job, the hours at my job have been slowly decreasing, and the rent increases that we're receiving make it harder on me to be able to pay the rent.
Que finalmente les pido que por favor piensen en nosotros, los inquilinos. Agradezco muchísimo a la alcaldesa y al concilio por haber escuchado nuestra preocupación y demanda y llevar adelante esta ley de estabilización de renta que es muy necesaria.
I asked the council and the mayor to think of us tenants when you vote in favor of this legislation, because we really need it. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Um, la siguiente persona sería, the next person is Ivette. And there you go, and hold on. My apologies. Ivette from thirty-two, sixty-two, Queenstown, and followed by Russner.
Uh, Mayor, may I ask that we maybe not do the screen sharing until after the people testify, so we can see people's faces?
Okay, um, Melissa, can you stop sharing the screen so we could see the, the members of the community? De no hacer duda, Melissa. I stopped sharing there. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Jimmy. All right, um, la siguiente persona, um, que va a hablar en estos momentos iba a ser Ivette.
Buenas noches, eh, mi nombre es Ivette. Vivo en la Queenstown, en el treinta y dos, sesenta y dos. Tengo cuatro años acá viviendo. Soy madre soltera y vengo a ustedes hablando acerca de los aumentos que, que nos han llegado. Eh, los aumentos están de cien dólares a ciento veinte. Mi renta es de mil setecientos. Eh, los salarios que tenemos son bastante bajos, lo que es que nos afecta mucho. A veces hasta para lo de la comida, pues ya no se nos, es difícil comprarla.
Good evening mayor and council, my name is Ivette. I live in Queenstown Apartments where I have been living for the last four years. My rent increase was of a hundred and twenty dollars and that is super high for them to be increasing our rents. Sometimes it's, it doesn't, it's not enough, you know, to make ends meet and I struggle with even buying food for my household.
Venimos pues hoy a ustedes primero pidiéndole a Dios y, y sabemos que con la ayuda de ustedes seguimos en la lucha para que pase la estabilización de renta. Eh, porque no es justo que estemos pagando altos aumentos y también pues es un lugar que nos gusta a nosotros, eh, es agradable el lugar. Y también tenemos otra preocupación que a veces cuando vamos a la oficina y pedimos pues que algo se ha dañado, ellos no te ignoran y lo que hacen es que se burlan de nosotros.
Mount Rainier is a great community. We want to continue living here. We like the community. It's very accessible for all of us. Um, and you know, but with the recent rent hikes and rent increases, it's made it hard and it's not fair that they increase our rents so much especially because when we need service from the office, when we go to the office to request any maintenance or anything, they laugh at us or usually make fun of us and tell us to do it ourselves or move.
Esta es la razón pues por la que nosotros le pedimos a los concejales, a la alcaldesa, que nos ayuden este año, no sabemos cuánto va a ser el, el aumento y pues que nos respalden con la estabilización de renta, gracias. Agradezco mucho a la alcaldesa, el concilio por el tiempo que se han tomado y por poner, como se llama, atender nuestras preocupaciones y demandas y por estar siempre aquí tratando de ayudarnos. Gracias.
A rent stabilization law would definitely really help us out as a community. We really need this law for us to be able to stay in our homes and we look forward to the mayor and council passing this and helping us in our communities. Please think of us when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much, muchas gracias. Rosemary, el micrófono es tuyo, the mic is yours, Rosemary.
Gracias. Buenas noches querida alcaldesa y apreciable concilio. Eh, les agradecemos muchísimo por el tiempo que nos dejan entrar en sus reuniones, Dios les bendiga a cada uno. Mi nombre es Rosmeri Cifuentes y estoy aquí desde el comienzo de la lucha y seguiré hasta el final y vivo en el 3318 Chauncey Place, apartamento uno cero uno, Mon Rainier, Maryland, los apartamentos de Queenstown.
Good evening mayor and council, my name is Rosmeri Cifuentes. I have been part of this rent stabilization, um, fight since the beginning, since we started this years ago and I plan, you know, on being here until we win this law.
Uh, mi renta es de mil seiscientos dólares al mes más miles y quiero hacerles saber también que de que ya tengo ya más de dieciséis años de vivir acá y pues nos gusta en este lugar. Entonces les pedimos, eh, por favor que nos ayuden a la estabilización de la renta.
My current rent right now is over one thousand six hundred dollars plus fees. We have been living here, my husband and I have been living in the community for sixteen years. We've been here for a long time, this is our home and we want to continue being here.
Eh, hemos estado viviendo los aumentos de renta extremos y aquí cerca de nosotros en Laurel y Blendesburg. Eh, no queremos lo mismo en Mon Rainier, queremos protecciones para los inquilinos de Mon Rainier. Alcaldesa y concilio, por favor pasen una ley de estabilización de renta ya. Cada día que no tenemos esta ley, los propietarios nos pueden aumentar la renta, por favor pasen la estabilización de, de renta ya, por favor citó.
I'm asking you guys to please pass rent stabilization as soon as possible. We don't want to be a city where there's massive rent hikes like there has been at other places. Every day that passes that we don't have rent stabilization, we are in danger of receiving a rent increase that can put us out of our home. Please, I'm asking you guys to pass rent stabilization.
Quiero agradecerle infinitamente a nuestra querida alcaldesa y al concilio por darnos la oportunidad siempre de expresar nuestras palabras. Eh, pues la verdad es que no tenemos palabras cómo agradecerles, pero Dios me les derrame bendiciones a cada uno y esperamos en nombre de Dios de que logremos esta lucha que llevamos y que salgamos triunfantes porque la verdad es de que cada uno estamos pasando por momentos muy difíciles y pues algunos, eh, tenemos poco trabajo y más sin embargo la renta pues es bastante extremo, eh, no se da tiempo y si no pagamos a tiempo pues nos cobra multa, total de que es un problema, pero les agradecemos infinitamente mucho y que Dios les derrame sus bendiciones. Hasta pronto.
I want to truly thank the mayor and council and honestly in words, I can't describe how thankful I am to you guys for letting us come here and, and express our concerns. I, I'm hoping in God that we will pass this legislation today and we will protect many of our families. A lot of us go through different, um, struggles daily and it's hard to describe them all, but rent stabilization would definitely help our communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, next on the speaker line, Teresa. Teresa, el micrófono es tuyo. Teresa, the mic is yours.
Muchas gracias, buenas noches alcaldesa y concilio.
Good night.
Mi nombre es Teresa Romero. Tengo cuatro hijos viviendo conmigo, madre soltera y vivo en el 3314 de la Chauncey Place. Tengo cinco años en la ciudad.
Good evening mayor and council, my name is Teresa Romero. I am a single mother of four and I have been living in Mount Rainier for five years now.
Eh, mi renta es de mil quinientos y cuando me tocó renovar pues me aumentó, mi aumento fue de más de cien dólares y pues siento que no es justo va por, por la economía que estamos viviendo, todo más caro, menos trabajo y ese es el sentir de cada uno de nosotros, los inquilinos.
My, I recently, um, my, my rent currently is over a thousand five hundred dollars and my last increase was over a hundred dollars. In the current times that we're in, I don't think that that was fair for my landlord to do that, increase my rent that high. And I'm here to ask the mayor and council to pass a law that would stop that, which is rent stabilization.
Y venimos hoy a ustedes a ser, a hacernos presente, que seguimos en la lucha de que pase una ley de estabilización de renta y que ya empezamos un año nuevo y no, no sabemos cómo nos viene otra vez este nuevo año, cuánto más nos va a aumentar. Estamos en ese pensar porque si ellos les da la gana de aumentarnos doscientos, trescientos, lo hacen porque no tienen conciencia de lo que nosotros, de la necesidad de que cada uno de nosotros pasamos. Pero nuestra esperanza pues son ustedes y ponemos nuestra fe en Dios y en ustedes para que ustedes sean pues nuestra mano derecha y nuestro amparo, nuestra guía, como dice Dios va, pero ahí estamos, con la fe en ustedes.
I, I am here, you know, because times are rough, times are hard right now and I am putting my faith right in God, but obviously in also the, the city council to pass this legislation. A lot of us are struggling and right now, as it, as, as things are, if my landlord wants to increase my rent one hundred dollars, two hundred dollars or three hundred dollars, he can do that. Right now, as things are, he can increase my rent the next day, whatever amount he wants. And I just received a rent increase of over a hundred dollars. Who is gonna stop them from doing that again this year? Please, I am urging the city council to pass rent stabilization. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Uh, tenemos, so we have a comment here from Caroline iPad. Caroline, do you want me to read it or do you wanna say it? I know you're not a resident, but you're, you're saying you're speaking on behalf of a resident that couldn't be here.
You can read it. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. It says that a resident so can only send this text message. I do know folks that what, though, wasn't able to be here, but wanted to let you know she hopes this rent stabilization passes. The rent at Kwood increases yearly up to five hundred or more. She says it's hard to maintain rent, water, electricity and may need to move out. They don't consider your income when they increase and that puts burden on the families that are trying to keep a roof over their heads. Okay, uh, the other question was, um, and Jorge Yucu, um, that increases that the residents were talking about the fifty, a hundred, a hundred and twenty and so, so far and so on, those are monthly, correct? Jorge?
Yes, the rent is increased monthly by fifty to a hundred dollars more than what you were paying the last month.
Exactly, this is a month to month charge, so every month, you know, it's a hundred twenty extra.
Yes. Alright, perfect, because the question was asked, but yeah, it's monthly, so this is not a year, this is monthly. And we have also heard of locations where they have increased about three hundred dollars more a month, monthly, monthly as well. So I want to make sure people do understand that this is monthly. So do I have, um, anybody else? So, um, let me see, I think I got to everybody in the first round of list. Um, so Aoba, you wanna speak now?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Ryan Washington. I represent the Apartment Office Building Association Metropolitan Washington. Uh, we, uh, have actually four properties in Mount Rainier, Kwood Gardens Apartments, Mount Rainier Community Housing, Queenstown Apartments and Ri, Rainier Manor, uh, which encompasses about, uh, two thousand one hundred and twenty-two rental units altogether. Uh, in addition, um, I, I don't believe they were supposed to attend, but couldn't unfortunately. Uh, but just, uh, just want to harp back on, I just have some questions because of the county council is bringing a rent stabilization bill which has the votes to pass next week in the council, uh, which addresses the same issue of capping rents in addition to having a work group working with statehold, state, state stakeholders, uh, to provide a longer term solution for all county residents in Precious County and I believe Mount Rainier is a municipality in the county. Uh, additionally, there's also a rental assistance program on the local level and as well as the state level where there, we're supporting a bill on a voucher choice program, uh, to accommodate those that have experienced high rent increases and I, I just want to let some of the proponents go first, just to listen to the stories and just to provide some more clarity. Uh, and it, it, the general theme is a lot of folks are experiencing a hundred dollar rent increases and you know, that a hundred dollars is a huge issue. However, I want to point that one of our properties, Kwood, um, they seen a dramatic increase in their annual lease fee. In twenty fifteen, their annual lease fee was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred. In twenty twenty-two, it's now two hundred and six thousand one hundred, so more than a fifty percent increase. And with this rent stabilization bill, uh, with the fees that are associated with, uh, this to maintain the the enforcement aspect in the rent stabilization board is likely to see another forty-five thousand, uh, dollars increase to that on top of rents being capped. Um, so it, it, this bill is duplicative because how are members supposed to operate when fees are increasing, taxes are increasing and a lot of our property managers pay property taxes, eighty-six cents of a hundred dollars, per a hundred dollars assessed goes back to the county, that goes to law enforcement, that goes into public works, uh, that may go into just the general upkeep of the city. Um, and it, this will discourage property owners just to exit out the market and move somewhere else. The rent stabilization is not the goal and members were trying to, we, we want to work, come together to address the solution because increases are hardship, but we gotta look for other alternatives. Uh, i- it's unfortunate that some folks are suffering under this, but rent stabilization is not gonna help. You'll see more condo conversions, uh, you'll see higher evictions because you'll see property owners not, not wanting to renew leases and just increasing the rent on the new releases, uh, just, you know, pushing folks out to move out. Uh, that's been shown in studies throughout. Rent control is not, rent stabilization is not the option. Uh, I urge the bo, this body to just consider defer to what the county council and what the state do on this action as they are already taking steps and we're working with them to resolve this issue and help those folks that are fixed income, that may be disabled, that aren't able to afford their rents. Um, and with that, I'll stay for any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. So to run up your position is that if rent stabilization passes then the landlords are gonna forcefully push basically renters out because of the hike and that is a definitely a strong position if they use like claim, if they've been doing what they're, you know, if they've been fair, they continue being fair, none of that should take into any matter whatsoever, but I'm glad to hear also, um, your, your position on it. Alright, um, we do have Brent from Casa who has asked to speak next and then I'm gonna go ahead and, um, um, look at the chat as well, what other comments are being made. Go ahead, Trent.
Yeah, no, I'd just like to make a couple of comments, you know, number one, we believe that actually uh, rent stabilization will actually incentivize landlords to put more money into their property because, you know, obviously there is an exceptions process to this rent stabilization cap, so putting more money into the property will absolutely give the opportunity for them to be able to raise the rents above that rate if necessary, right? So that is one thing I would want to share and then also in terms of, I was also really saddened to hear about that, um, attempting and pushing people out, but the truth is that this rent stabilization is tied to the unit and not tied to the tenant in the apartment. So, um, actually there wouldn't be an incentive to push someone out in terms of cost because the unit would still have to be the same rent stabilization rate, right? They, they wouldn't be able to change even if they got a new tenant, it would still have, it would only still be able to jump the same amount. So I just wanted to make those two points and, um, absolutely happy to be having this discussion and grateful for all of your work and detail oriented, uh, research on this council and mayor.
Thank you so much. Um, so I do have a couple of comments on the chat. Uh, Jared, can you also let me know if there's any comments on Facebook, please? And, thank you so much. So I have, oh, apologize, this thing is, everything you guys make a, a comment it moves. Alright, um, I do have Ofilia making a comment. Ofilia, do you want to speak on it? Do you want me to read your comment? Ofilia? Okay, so I'll read, um, I'll read the comment from Ofilia.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I, I couldn't get to my microphone, I'm here now. Yeah, I, I really do want to speak on it. And you know, it, it was disturbing for me to hear one of the tenants say how, you know, they were mocked when they asked for fixes to their apartment, that's one thing and I think whoever that landlord is should definitely, somebody should talk to them, they should be fine, that, that should not be, no one should have to go through that. But to start, to hear that the people, uh, rents are being increased by a hundred dollars or more per month. At first when I, when someone was saying it, I thought, oh, the increase was for the year, but then it was like it was for a month. That's outrageous. You know, at that rate, then maybe we should see if we can't work with some of these tenants because you can, for what they're paying in rent, they could, they could own a home. Um, you know, and, and so, so that, that's absolutely ridiculous. You know, I know that some of the smaller landlords are, are, are being exempted from this and I think that's fine. You know, if it's an eight unit building, if it's a ten unit building and they're being exempt, that's fine. But let's be real, the people who own the, you know, Kwood and Queenstown, they, who actually own those complexes, that's a multimillionaire. Okay, so I, 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 I don't feel bad that they, that they should be, have to stabilize, that they should have to look at their tenants and say, you know, paychecks aren't keeping pace with all of the increases in food and rent and utilities. And so if, if, you know, everybody's gotta, gotta bite a little bit, the, the tenants aren't saying, don't raise the rents. They're saying, don't raise it a hundred dollars a month on me and I think that's fair. The the tenants aren't saying, don't raise the rents, they're saying, don't raise it a hundred dollars a month on me, and I think that's fair. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Ophelia. Um, we do have a comment from Caroline, the strength increases are happening throughout my Rainier. And they they agree with the comment that Ophelia made that, um, that increases are outrageous. And yeah, those are monthly increases, not, uh, yearly. Um, it says they should not be especially considering the safe economy, paychecks are not keeping the pace. That was Ophelia. So Mario, you made a comment, you want me to read it or you would like to speak upon your comment, Mario? Okay, hearing none, I'll read it while the rent increases one thing, but to nor make fun of people when they're requiring some repair in their apartment is just upsetting. So to the resident that said that you could immediately contact code or contact your council member, any of us, including myself. And, um, we'll go ahead and 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 make sure that, um, that a conversation happens, uh, because, um, repairs do need to be made. Um, okay, and it's not right for people to humiliate you because you're asking for a repair. Um, uh, Caroline, uh, says along with paying for water and electricity is very hard and taking care of children. Let me see, um, and it's a conversation back and forth between Ophelia and Mario, basically agreeing that is too much. Um, uh, Joel, you already spoke and I think you stated your your statement when it comes to the expensive of, um, operation. Um, let me see, I do have, uh, Tanya Taylor, Community Manager, Cable Garden, um, is here. Tanya, do you like the floor?
Yes, I can say, I only can speak with, um, for Kaywood Garden Apartments. Uh, one thing I can tell you, I've been working with the company for twenty-seven years. We do care about our residents. However, um, I'm listening to some of the rent increases. Um, I guess that's Queenstown. We try to keep our rent increases reasonable, which is fifty dollars. Um, as landlords, you have to go up because our taxes go up every year. A lot of things that we do for our community, we don't even bother the city. There are a lot of things that needs to be done within Kaywood Garden Apartments. But we take it upon ourselves to do it ourselves. So in agreement not to do it, I'm not with that because I know we care about our residents and we try to keep our rent increases at least fifty dollars. Um, no more than fifty dollars, but I can't speak for all of the other, um, communities. But I definitely wanted to talk about Kaywood Garden Apartments.
Thank you so much, Taya. Um, definitely appreciate you being here as well. Um, so I have, um, a a comment says we, okay, so we trans, thank you so much for translating. Um, we are responsible tenants and what we're asking is for fair rent. So to clarify, the apartment buildings are gonna be extend part to units and under. Uh, because we have also heard from, uh, tenants of, um, units that are, you know, four, three and four over that, um, have increased three hundred dollars. So so definitely, how do you call it, um, it does, the rents increases a month, a month, let me clarify that. Um, so that does not extend, um, smaller business, um, buildings, um, br- you know, like one of the, um, one of the tenants said that, um, if, you know, they feel like if they wake up tomorrow, charge a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, um, they'll go ahead and do it without no explanation quite a few of them. Okay, all right, so, um, so that concludes at least what I see on the chat. Thank you so much for everybody be here and I do hear, uh, somebody from Susan's, uh, let's go Mariner, hashtag stop the bleed. All right, thank you guys for your comments and thank you for being here. So I'm gonna go ahead and open up the floor to mayor and council. Um, and let's start this conversation, okay? All right, so, uh, we're gonna go with Luke, Valerie, Jimmy and Jared. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanna say, um, that I'm proud of a lot of people, um, tonight who have, who have really contributed to putting this, um, piece of legislation in front of us. Um, first and foremost, just really proud of all the residents who have come out. Um, this is a really well attended and has been a really well intended, um, city council meetings now going back, um, a couple of months here and just um, really wanna thank you. Um, it's not easy to take time out of your night to come, um, and say a few words in support of, um, what's happening in your local community. Um, that takes a lot of effort, um, and that takes a lot of time, and I know all of us have limited capacity in that space. And so I just wanna thank you all for coming, um, each and every night to give your testimony. It's much appreciated. Uh, mayor and council, I'm really proud of us here. We really work together, um, on this to try to get something done, um, for residents. Um, uh, that I think, um, is a good piece of legislation. I think it balances, um, you know, what obviously we've heard from residents tonight. Uh, making sure that we can stabilize their rent costs, um, along with, um, and I think Trent mentioned this, just, um, is some of the landlord's needs. Um, if they do make those improvements, um, to their buildings, um, you know, they can file for an exception. Um, if you are a new building and you wanna come in and develop in Mount Rainier, you're exempt for fifteen years. Um, so we have a lot of things in there that I think really balances this. And, um, is is the rent stabilization increase, um, at sixty percent of CPI, I think is really narrowly tailored um, to, um, what we were able to glean from sort of the census tract data that we were able to, um, track down here. So I think it's a really good piece of legislation. I look forward to supporting it and I wanna thank everybody for being involved. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Luke, um, Valerie?
Um, oh, sorry, there I am. Um, hi, everyone. Um, yeah, I mean, thank you, everyone, for being here and for coming out and talking and, uh, speaking out on the issues on both sides. I think it's very important to hear from everyone. Um, um, I know we've done a lot of work on this since we've introduced it. So I wanna thank our council members and, uh, city staff for helping with that, um, as well. Um, I think it's very important to get this right. Um, I think it is a little bit, um, intense to hear that, um, rent is increasing thirty-six hundred dollars a year. I think that's a little bit extraordinary. I'm not sure if that's quite right. Um, but, um, I know that we have a lot of work to do on housing in our city as a whole. Um, so, you know, rent stabilization is one potential tool in our toolbox, um, to use. Um, I think, you know, there's also a lot of work to do on property taxes.
Audio is pretty bad, so I don't know, something you can do.
Hello? Yeah. Yeah, okay. Sorry about that. Um, I know we have more work to do on property taxes. We have more work to do on, you know, missing middle housing, um, as well as home repair programs. I think those are very, um, important to our community as a whole. Um, and so I think, um, that's all I wanna say at this point. Um, thank you to everybody who's been here and thank you for everybody for voicing your opinions. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Valerie, uh, Jamie, then Jared?
Um, again, thank you, Mayor. I I said the first time in twenty years I've been here that we've actually engaged people, uh, the renters in our community and who are seventy percent of our community and who have to be engaged. Right, you doesn't wa- deserve a lot of credit. There have been discussion, uh, raised that this hadn't really been, you know, people didn't know about it, but uh, I asked the city clerk, and this is actually the seventh public hearing we've had on it in the last few months. And we've had over had over fifty people testify. So people have been able to engage and it's been lots of announcement. So I don't feel that we haven't talked about it. Uh, you know, I I feel, I mean, Joel Kelty, who's I've known for a while and there's, you know, someone who's a, uh, you know, qualitative quality landlord, uh, you know, on Barnum Street and there's been no complaints. The problem we had about, we talked about exempting small landlords is that some of the most, uh, uh, gruesome, I guess, is, uh, testimony we had was some small from landlords, from tenants in small buildings, especially the ones on Thirty-Fourth Street, uh, between Bunga Hill and and Rhode Island Avenue. So it was hard to figure out how do we exempt some and not the others. Again, I think we're quite willing, you know, I think the board direction on, you know, giving, you know, kind of waivers for people who do stuff. This, we're not trying to punish people. We're just trying to, you know, we have a crisis in our country and a crisis in our community. We're trying to make, you know, things affordable uh, for people. There have been a, a number of amendments have come up in the, I don't know, I got some amendments in the last, you know, twenty-four hours. Uh, this is ma- is not a final product. Uh, I think, you know, all open to trying to review and revise and figure out, you know, how this might have to be twe- tweaked to make it, you know, better. It's like that. It was raised the issue about that the board has three people on the, uh, on the, instead out of five, or at least those three people are actually residents. And I think the criteria are pretty clear. And I think people, uh, whether they're tenants or residents or anybody's gotta be very open to legitimate reasons why they have to raise rents beyond the, uh, the sixty percent, uh, limit. Uh, and also, I think a lot of, we don't, I just, a lot of my, uh, my, you know, my payments and other people's payments have to do with mortgage. A lot of people bought their properties of my, you know, many years ago where, you know, the the mortgages are kind of fixed. So I don't think, you know, when we talk about it, you know, what's the cost of housing, we also have to talk about, has the mortgage gone up that much and, you know, other fees. Uh, you know, it is no easy thing, uh, no easy solutions to this thing. But for us to do nothing is not acceptable. Uh, they just, you know, we have a country in crisis. We have a DC area where, you know, whatever, you know, the the rates are going up. This is not just Mount Rainier, it's going on throughout the community and we have to do something. This is it. One last thing, uh, was raised about the county, and I think Mr. Washington raised about the county, uh, ordinance. That's fine, uh, Mount Rainier is doing its own ordinance and it doesn't really conflict with the county, the county ordinance really won't, uh, conflict with what we're doing. And, uh, I think we have to go ahead. If, you know, we have to revise this, the council has to revise this. We'll revise and tweak it to make it, you know, work for everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for, you know, kind of pushing us along.
Thank you so much, also for, for your great effort, Jimmy. Um, it's so good to open up the floor to, um, Jared, and can I please have ten more minutes on the clock? As we're wrapping this up, Melissa already flashing my screen like. Thank you so much. Can I get a second?
I get it.
Um, any discussion? Abstention, objection? All right, um, Jared, I'm gonna open up the floor. Also, Luke, thank you so much for remarking your hard work on this as well. I I know you have, um, done a lot of heavy lifting a- as well on this. All right, Jared, go ahead.
Yep, and I'll be quick, cuz, uh, other folks have already covered the points I'm gonna make, but I just wanna thank everyone for the input. We have had input on all sides of this issue over, um, last few months for hours. As Jimmy mentioned, we've had uh, probably more residents than, uh, we've ever had on a single, well, more and more, uh, folks come out and testify, um, than we've ever had. Um, primarily residents that we normally don't have come out, um, and I I just wanna, you know, recognize the, uh, the folks that took their time to come out. Um, other voices that, you know, came to, uh, you know, lend their lend their thoughts, lend their decisions as well. We appreciate it, uh, and we heard and we listened to it all as we thought and deliberated and worked on this issue over the last, uh, several months. So I feel very good about the deliberative process that has brought us here. Um, you know, as Luke mentioned, we've, you know, this is, there is some flexibilities in this provisions, uh, that exempts fifteen, uh, properties less than fifteen years old. Reynolds units and buildings, two more fewer units, rental units and are occupied. There's also provisions and a process for reasonable returns. So this is, this is a, you know, a a ordinance that, this is an approach that recognizes, you know, the realities and um, and the situations that we're gonna face, uh, in this city in terms of how rental properties are, uh, proffered and how they are rented. So, um, I know, you know, again, I just wanna say, I know we're in a community where the most vulnerable among us are struggling. I'll just reiterate what Jimmy said many times over, um, and I'm happy, you know, I really thank Mayor Benitez for pushing this issue. Um, there is, uh, it's really great to, for us to be able to take some action that supports, um, something covers, you know, as more members of our community than almost anything we've ever done, uh, and the ones that are often struggling the most. So thank you.
So thank you, Jared. Um, so I will tell you guys, um, thank you guys for the kind words you said towards me. But it's been a team effort to get this legislation now from like, you know, research, putting numbers together and pushing it through. Um, but also wanna thank, um, the residents who have come out in high numbers, not just to our meetings, but also to speak to us or, you know, I got in, um, various communications with them about how they feel about their rent stabilization. Sharing their story where mobility, you know, from a one bedroom to a two bedroom apartment is no longer the case for them because the rents continue to increase, at least alone the the dream of one day owning home. Um, you know, I told you guys my story. I, um, my family, my husband's family was a renter in the apartment buildings and they bought our our home, the home where I'm at, and they sold it to my my husband. And that's the reason why my family was able to move from an apartment to a home that later on our family was able to purchase. And this is the home that, you know, belongs to my daughter, right? So once again, so it's like three or four generations now of us like living in the city of Mount Rainier because we love this place, right? I tell you guys, I I married to Mount Rainier, but definitely wasn't hard to love, fall in love with this place, right? Because people truly care about this community, right? And and saying that, you know, um, I wanna give a big thank you to, um, to Casa who has helped us with translation, who has helped us with the, with the community members and and make sure that they've been also, um, advocates. A policy link, uh, Trent, who also has made sure that, um, you know, connect us to to the network of the other a hundred and eighty. Um, so that way we knew like we were not going to this alone. Um, big shout out to, um, Councilor Martin, um, from Laurel, who has also been there and there's times where I'd be like, okay, we need to discuss and talk, um, they have been there. But also the leadership of the county council right now with, uh, Councilor Ariana, who, um, who said like, look, we're hearing to the tenants and and this is what needs to do to the Pre-Georges County Municipal Association, that this is one or representing that twenty-seven municipalities where rent stabilization happens to be one, um, of their priorities, one of their three priorities they were fighting for, um, this year. So I'll say this to you guys, um, rent stabilization is one tool of the many things we need to, um, address. We fully aware know that there's a lot of bleeding going on in all of our communities. And it often said that this is a small bandage, but it's a bandage that will be able to help our residents as we work with the county and the state and other, um, in order to make sure that more protections are happening. At the end of the day, if like more than seventy percent of our residents are asking heavily for this help and they have felt infringed for so long. And, you know, they feel like they could come to us and say like, hey, we need help and we need you guys to know we're struggling. This is not legislation that was born yesterday. It's been many months in the work. It's been quite a few years in the work. But even the first discussion of this happened quite a bit ago as we were trying to format it together. So the, um, this is not just affecting our migrant communities, affecting our seniors, it's affecting our low income residents. At the end of the day, it affects us as a whole, as a city. So if we do not act and react, um, when it comes to our residents, why are we doing here as elected officials, you know? And, um, I will say that this team has fights hard for their, for their community. I think you guys spending endless nights, like, you know, working and doing legislation, but also out there in the community, helping your residents. And it's it's a great honor to see you guys sitting here. So definitely, this glory doesn't goes to me alone. It goes to all of you guys cuz you guys have worked on it, even coming to like making sure our residents are taken care of. Um, and at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we realize that, um, if we decide to keep ignoring residents, right? Um, we are not doing any better than other people, right? So Mount Rainier went from a very dark city to a city that has been very progressive, but at the same time where the community of plenty of diversity is included. And this is an example of how we have members, um, of various backgrounds that have come over and talked to us and let us know what the concerns are. So it is unifying in that sense of we'll continue be fighting for for the majority minority in our city and it's important for us to be there. So I will say that, um, council, I need to know if there's anything else you would like to add. I mean, I think you guys all, we went through the whole legislation with the exceptions to make sure on it. Um, we are gonna be working and advocating at the county for the county to pass something as well. And, you know, there's provisions that if later else we need to adjust, you know, we'll work on them. But at this point, um, I think we don't know we can for this legislation and it's up for a vote. And as much as you'll hear my voice, right? Um, I definitely will be calling, um, for a motion to approve ordinance ten dash twenty, twenty-two? Right, Melissa? Melissa's like, yes, I'm not sharing your screen. Okay, the rent stabilization, um, ordinance. So there's a motion on the floor. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Jamie, there's a second. We are gonna open up to discussion and if there's none, I will be calling for a vote. Uh, council, any more discussion on this? And you could shake your hand now, so that way I move to vote. Okay? Any abstentions? Any objections?
I I, Mayor, I think you need a roll call vote. Are you doing that now?
Yeah, I'm doing a roll call vote right now, but I wanted to go to the first two and I'll go ahead and call you guys' name and I'll I'd like to hear from you guys directly. Okay, Luke Chesek?
Yes.
Jimmy Carlo?
Hi.
Jared Stoffes?
Hi.
Valerie Woodall?
Yes.
So, and I'm a yes. So Orange ten dash twenty-two has officially passed unanimously by mayor and council. So, and I'm a yes. So, ordinance ten dash twenty-two has officially passed unanimously by mayor and council. So, thank you guys. I know, I'm gonna try not to cry. I know the first conference had me in tears for a while there. All right, thank you guys so much, and thank you so much to all of our residents that were here. Um we do appreciate you and will continue like, you know, fighting and working for you. You can tell people are very happy. Gracias a ustedes. So I, I thank them for being here and let them know uh that we voted unanimously and how great you guys are. Okay? Mayor and Council. Okay, gracias a todos, okay, buenas noches. So have a, have a good night, everyone. Please for this part, for this part, you're welcome to stay. So, perfecto. So they're sending you guys plenty of blessings and thank you instead if you guys ever need anything, any help or they're, they're available a- as well, then they thank you for your effort and for everything that you do.
We have a long meeting ahead.
Muchas gracias a todos, okay? So that's it, we have about four hours of meeting. All right, moving on to new business. Discussion and vote on the appointments to the Ethics Commission, ten minutes. The mayor and council will discuss and vote on the appointment of Ms. Sally to the Ethics Commission. Um, is Ms. Sally here right now?
Yes, hi, everyone.
Hi, how are you? So, um, thank you for submitting your application. Um, and the application was sent to the Ethics Board and definitely they have endorsed to, to, to us, to recommend you to move towards the Ethics Commission, okay? Uh, anything you would like to say before we move on to a vote?
Uh, no, I'm, I am honored and I'm looking forward to, to serving the community. My husband and I have been here about
I think you.
Serving everyone else.
Oh, sorry, Sam, you, you locked, or Sally, you locked up.
You froze, yeah.
Yeah. My husband and I have, and then we lost.
Okay, I was just saying, my husband and I have lived here for about a year and a half. Uh, we love Mount Rainier, we think it's a wonderful community and I'm looking forward to, to serving and, and being able to, to help everyone out.
Perfect, thank you so much. Council, I'm gonna do a round to open the floor in case you have a question or a comment. If not, we'll go ahead and move to a vote, okay? So, we're gonna start with Jared, since your mic is open.
Sally, thanks for coming out and thanks for waiting through uh, so probably a longer uh council agenda item than normal, but we really appreciate it, appreciate you uh coming into this community and volunteering and stepping up right away. So just thanks again so much and uh looking forward to working more with you.
Perfect, thank you, Valerie.
Thank you, um, I feel the same way. Thank you very much for stepping up and look forward to working more with you. Thank you.
Perfect, Jimmy?
Thank you, Sally.
Perfect, Luke?
Yep, thank you for stepping up, we appreciate it.
We're gonna make this very quick, aren't we? All right, thank, thank you, Sam, so much. So can I have a motion to uh approve the appointment of uh Ms. uh Sally of Boom to the Ethics Commission?
So moved.
Can you probably move in second, any discussion? Any abstentions, objections, hearing none? Congratulations and welcome to the Ethics Commission. Okay?
Thank you.
You see, that was, that was that quick, right? You're welcome to stay, but if not, we fully understand as well, right? Thank you so much.
Perfect, have a good evening, thanks.
Good evening. So moving on to item number seven, discussion and vote on the reappointment of the Board of Elections. We should have made it the mighty Board of Elections. The mayor and council will discuss and vote on the reappointment of Ms. Nicole Logan, Ms. Ophelia Baxter, Ms. Tara Grantham, Mr. Mario Cisnetos, Mr. Carl Jones, um, Casey, right, Ms. uh Casey Junior, and Mr. Thomas Delaro to the Board of Elections. So, Council, any discussion? Aside from thanking them dearly for, once again, signing up to do this beautiful work that they're gonna be doing for the elections coming up? Okay, so we're gonna go backwards, so we're gonna go, Luke, go ahead.
No, yeah, thank you all for everything you do. Um, and yeah, so happy that you're willing to do it again. Thank you.
Don't tend them too much, they might change your mind. Give me to appoint them fast. All right, perfect, Jimmy?
Uh, thank you, but uh, I have to ask a question. Uh, do you know when the packages will be available, what the timeline for turning in petitions is, when to when? Cuz we're getting close to March.
We, I can certainly answer that. Thank you, um, Mayor and Council for having us and for continuing um, to approve and hopefully um vote to reappoint us. Um, packages are ready, Melissa, Sam has those at City Hall ready for distribution. Um, we also have updated the city voter registration forms. So if anyone um who are local city voters, including our sixteen-year-olds, um in the city are um eligible to vote, you just have to fill out the city forms and all are available in English and Spanish. As for the package, um Jimmy, the package is ready, they're due by um, Monday, March twentieth, the deadline is four PM at City Hall. Um, to have them in place, and then the certification confirmation process will happen at eight PM. And there will be a Zoom link and um a small um seating available at City Hall for us to complete the actual certification there on site. Um, if anyone wanted to attend. So, we are very close to that date, you're right.
And for the public, how many signatures uh are, uh needed and where can they, how can they get a package?
Yeah, so the packages can be, um, contact Melissa Sam at City Hall and she will um, guide you in terms of how you can get it. She can email it, it will be uploaded on the city website, so it can be downloaded there as well. Um, or you can pick one up at City Hall. And as for signatures, for each council seat, there's um, two council seats open, one in Ward one, one in Ward two, both four-year um, um appointments or four-year um seats. And each candidate who is applying for candidacy needs twenty registered voters in the city to sign in their ward. So if you are representing Ward one, your um petition signer should be from Ward one. If you're representing Ward two as a candidate, the petition has to be signed by Ward two residents. And those, that information is certified before the packages are um, um considered completed.
And I'm seeing from uh communications, it's the package is on the city website as well. Perfect, thank you so much. Uh Jimmy, that answers all your questions, correct? Good? Okay, so um, we're missing, I gotta look up, Valerie?
Um, thank you all for serving. Um, you've been important work in an important time, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Jared.
No, thank you so much for uh taking the time. I know it's uh, it's, it's a big lift, particularly around election time every uh every two years or, well, every year for the last um, last handful, but um, much appreciated. Thank you for stepping up again. And uh, we, we really appreciate all your time and dedication to the city.
Perfect, uh, thank you so much. Like I mentioned earlier, you do make our job a lot easier cuz you guys handle the whole entire thing. Our job is just to show up and encourage people to register and vote. Um, as a reminder, like you mentioned, if you're sixteen, nobody can register to vote. If you're a non-citizen, you also could register and and vote. And if you have recently moved to City of Mount Rainier, please register to vote as well. Uh, the Board of Elections, it had a voter drive last Friday. If I'm correct, cuz I just saw two of the members there at um, at Joe's, so they're gonna be putting more information out. But Council, we need to reappoint them. If not, um, this is all theory. About all the work they're gonna be doing, so we need to like basically appoint them to make.
Tell them of the appointments.
Any seconds? Okay, they probably moved in second, any abstentions, objections? Hearing a nun, um, you guys have been officially appointed, so um next two years at least. All right. Yeah, go ahead, Ophelia.
Um, I just wanted to say that our next voter registration drive will be Saturday, March eleventh at um, i- in front of Glutz, and we will be there from ten to two.
So, can you guys also tell the, the residents, what is it that they need to register so they come ready for you guys?
Um, if, if they changed their address recently but haven't um sent it to the county, if they want to register with the city for the first time, if they wanna register with the county for the first time. If they have anything on their voter registration form that they, you know, vital information that they need to change, including party affiliation, they can make, make those changes on the form at our voter registration drive.
Perfect, thank you so much. So we are having a meeting, we are gonna be inviting us on our, on our meeting for March. So that way you guys could do a rundown of everything, so that way we can encourage people to register to vote and also run for office. You know, you get to work with like pretty cool people. All right? All right, so um, congratulations to every single one of you and um also to Melissa, who is our liaison for um the Board of Elections. Um, she is gonna be working overtime all this time um as well. So, thank you guys and have a great night. I don't wanna keep you up longer cuz you guys have long.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, perfect. Okay, moving on to item number eight, adjournment. Can I have a motion on the floor to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, so probably move in second, any objection? Abstentions, hearing none. We are gonna end the works, the legis, the special legislative session and we'll be moving on to the work session, okay? So if you guys could take a two-minute break, so you guys could go grab water and come back, we could restart at four forty-one, or you guys want a whole five minutes? Council, what would you like?
Sounds good.
Okay, see you guys in five minutes, okay? Melissa, get the, get the clock running. So welcome back, we are gonna be moving on to our work sessions. Okay? So council, I do see you on the screens, I need to make sure you can hear me. Uh, Jimmy, I do see Luke, Jimmy, Valerie, and Jared.
Don't we have a special session to devote on something?
We have a hearing following uh, the work session.
Okay.
Uh, Melissa, make sure to um, to let me know that it's after, after the work session. Okay? So um, agenda of the work session for mayor council for city of Maryland, virtual work session for this Tuesday, February 21st, 2023, following the special legislative meeting of the mayor and council, okay? So I'd like to call this meeting to order at 8:46 PM. Uh, Luke Chesek? Here?
Here.
Jerystoffus?
Oops, here.
Valerie Woodall?
I'm here.
Jimmy Tarlo?
Yeah.
All right, so the um, we are all here, there's so five of us in attendance. Review of the agenda, the mayor and council will review the agenda from the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest of discussion. Vice Mayor, can you please go ahead and read the work session agenda?
Yes, I can. Number one, call to order. Number two, review of the agenda. Number three, discussion, presentation discussion on the code compliance second quarter report. Number four, presentation discussion on the public work second quarter report. Number five, presentation discussion on the second quarter financial report. Uh, number six, um, discussion on ordinance uh, 2-2023 budget amendment two. Number seven, discussion on support for Maryland State Traffic Safety Legislation on HB uh, 353, 36, um, uh, 367, HB 70 and H, sorry, that should be HB 94. Discussion of a proposal operations support for gateway CDC on a three-year basis. Uh, number nine, discussion proposal city-based home repairs program, ARPA funds. Number 10, ARPA discussion update, number 11, presentation of minutes, and number 12, adjournment.
Thank you so much. All right, council, is there anything you wish to delete or add to this very substantial agenda at 8:48 PM at night?
Um, yes, can I, um, can I um, have the home repair program come off of the um, agenda for tonight? At this point, um, we'll bring it to the next work session for discussion.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much, Valerie, um, anything else? We're good? Uh, council, anybody else wants to delete anything from the agenda, move it to a different one, or we're good as assistance? Luke, I'm gonna go around, just give me thumbs up. Luke, we're good?
Yeah, I think we're good. I think the ARPA discussion then might just go towards um, uh, the, the, the rental assistance piece, where we might need to add a few more thousand dollars, so that's it.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna like, uh, could, you know, minimize it to that, you know, reduce it to that, I guess would be the proper term, and then we could have a lengthier, um, I do think we need to have a lengthier conversation, maybe put that as a, as a full point and um, as we're reviewing um, the other items on it. All right, perfect, um. Uh, Jimmy, anything to um, add to lead, or how are we feeling? You're good? Um, I think Jimmy might be good.
Oh, I'm, I may be on, yes, I'm shaking my head, yeah.
You were off camera, so you were shaking it off, off, off the screen. Um, Jared, how about you? We're good? Or is there anything you need to delete from that agenda?
Oh, I, I promise I'll be quicker than 20 minutes online.
Okay, I will be timing you. That means like he's gonna like, singularly handy make sure we're less than 20 minutes together. All right, perfect, uh, Melissa, move it out to number three. Thank you so much, so um, we have um, Councilmember Woodall has requested for her, one of her items to be removed for the agenda, and can we do thumbs up if we're in agreement? Usually we're in agreement if we remove our own. All right, so we have a full agreement for mayor and council to remove that item of the agenda, so it's been, it's been moved to next work session, Melissa, can you make sure it's on the next work session, please? I, I, I hear you, Melissa, kind of, all right? All right. Moving on to item number three, now that we have adopted an agenda, let's move on with it. Um, presentation discussion on the code compliance second quarter report, 20 minutes, the mayor council receive a presentation from Ms. Alma Farafino, Director of Code Compliance. Good evening, Alma, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, thank you for um, having me here tonight. I am here to present um, our quarterly report for the months of October through December. Um, in a brief, I just want to let you know that our team has been very proactive, um, as always, trying to um, comply with all the inquiries, with um, everything that has to do with, you know, um, concerns that come in from both rest and, and commercial side of the city. Um, inspections have been going on every um, month as normal. Um, we do not have, um, we did not have, I'm sorry, many inspections when it comes to the businesses, um, of course, because it was the end of um, the year. Uh, but we currently do um, inspections for rentals on a monthly basis. Um, received a lot of um, permit applications which we process on a daily basis. Um, our assistant Emily has been um, very diligent on um, making sure that we actually process all these applications um, on a promptly basis. Um, we have been um, part of all the events, um, fortunately, when it comes to um, given baskets for all the holidays, um, and the events, which are very, very um, something that we enjoy, uh, personally, I do enjoy um, doing them all the time, because I get to, um, and the whole team gets to um, talk with residents and we get to, you know, commingle with everyone, um, at that more into like the friendly basis and not code enforcement or code compliance like we call it. Um, we have been able to actually update our um, our city ordinance, our, our unit code in the website, which thankfully has been done um, by mayor, um, city council, city manager, and our city clerk. Um, so in combination, everybody has pitched in to actually have this um, completed, and thankfully, um, we have, you know, updated all the information when it comes to our ordinance. Um, we have had uh, to do many renewals um, for uh, rentals as I mentioned before. We are going into right now, which is the renewals, and I want to do emphasize that because uh, February 28th is actually when uh, our renewals actually expired when it comes to businesses, churches, and residential parking. So I do want to um, emphasize that it's important for everyone to come in, and if you do um, have to do your renewals, please get them done uh, before February 28th.
Um, is the screen froze?
Did you lose her?
The screen froze and I'm almost in? Um.
Was I disconnected all this time?
Yes, your winky shirt, we were paying attention, Alma, you were disconnected.
Oh my god.
No, Alma, we heard up to when you said February 28th, so it's not like.
You heard most of it.
We, yes, we got most of it, it's not like.
I was trying to figure out why everybody was so quiet, and I was like, huh, no comments.
So is this the end of your report right now, Alma?
Yes, they told me to keep it to it in short, um, yes, definitely.
All right, perfect, thank you so much. I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor to the council. All right, so um, Luke, Jimmy, Valerie, and Jared, go ahead.
No, Alma, I know you've been dealing with a lot of difficult situations, um, that's a lot of times out of the public limelight. Um, uh, but it's, um, obviously there's, residents have very, very um, um, good concerns, and um, a lot of times you gotta balance sort of concerns for businesses, concerns from residents, um, and I just appreciate the manner you do it in. Um, I appreciate you always checking with our legal department to make sure that we're doing everything in accordance with the law. Um, and just really appreciate you and your staff um, for coming out here and keeping us informed. So I just want to say, thank you, um, no complaints, and love what you're doing.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Luke, Jimmy?
The later it is, the less comments you get. Thank you, Alma, for everything.
Valerie, Jared?
Um, thank you, um, yeah, I know, um, this is good, um, I think you've been doing a lot of good work, especially, you know, obviously with the refrigeration trucks, and um, I think there are still some issues to deal with in terms of dumpsters, um, especially on 34th Street in the business area, um, just trying to figure out ways to shield them a little more. Um, so I'd like to work with you a little bit more on that. Um, do we have a communications plan for the renewals, um, business license renewals that we, are we putting that out into communications at all, or is that posted somewhere on our website?
Yes, we, uh, we actually have asked um, communications, came to actually um, blast that out there. And um, we stay in communication with um, all the business owners and um, try to make them aware. We actually hand-delivered um, business applications to everyone, and the ones that we did not, um, you know, were able to actually make contact with, we actually mailed them the application. So we've been trying to do different things to actually get that accomplished.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And Jared?
No, just thank you, Alma, to you and your team for the work you're doing, for keeping us updated and for this thorough report, it's helpful to be able to point residents to this to um, show them and demonstrate the work you're doing and the metrics your um, your team's meeting, so thank you again.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, um, also MRBA has posted the information on their um, website about the rental um, license deadline, and uh, we have, uh, as liaison of the Fundraising Business Association, we have a meeting tomorrow morning, and we'll make sure we remind them to ask them for their support in making sure that the businesses are aware and that um, you know, also remind them to, to pay, so that we're working collectively as a team. Okay, so we are having a meeting too, so Alma, thank you so much, um, for, for your work. I, I know that um, you've been with us for quite a bit and you have always um, done so much for the department, for our community, and striking a balance sometimes is hard, because um, it's a lot of information that comes to you. A lot of love and complaints from residents, but at the end of days, like you, you do what was right, following the, you know, the city guidelines and sticking to it and, and making sure that um, we do what's best for our residents. So I appreciate you and your whole entire team, I know you guys have a lot of work and uh, we look forward to continue collaborating, okay? All right.
And thank you. Um.
Go ahead, perfect, um, so council, are we good with this report? We're ready to like, let Alma go if she's not in the agenda like anymore? We're good, okay, Alma, if you're not, if you're not in the agenda anymore, which you do spend a lot of time with meetings with us, um, thank you so much for being here tonight, okay? And thank you for your work and your team's work as well. All right, perfect, so moving on to the next item, presentation discussion on the public works second quarter report. The mayor council receive a presentation from uh, Ms. Rosio Latour, Director of Public Works, Rosio, the floor is yours, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and my fellow coworkers. Uh, thank you for your time tonight, um, so I'll try to be brief as well. Um, I have a few updates as far as um, the quarter two report, which is from October through December. Um, I started my report off with the newest grant, which is a CBT, Chesapeake Bay Trust Grant, uh, which is for the rain gardens on Arundel Road between 25th Street and 30th Street. Um, this grant is for $150,000, I'm sorry, $150,520, um, as of the second quarter report. Echo Site Inc. is working still on preparing the plans up to 70%, um, so that is the latest update for that. So we're moving from 30% completion to 70% um, completion. Um, as far as the second um, CBT grant, which was completed on 30th Street and 33rd Street, on my last report, I mentioned that the rain gardens were completed as of October, but a little bit soon after, uh, we did have a problem with a 10-foot rain garden in front of 4,003 30th Street. That was not, that was basically failing, um, which in shorter terms, um, it was not draining properly. Uh, we did have Mike go back out there and evaluate that rain garden, and it was determined that that 10-foot rain garden was um, basically failing, and we needed to backfill it and to its original grade and condition. So that had to be done, so we lost one rain garden on, on 33rd, I'm sorry, on 30th. And after the construction was completed, we only spent, out of the $105,000 that was given for that grant, we only spent about $58,000. So we still have money, a budget left over for that grant, so right now, we're discussing with Echo Site uh, what are possible other um, locations that we can identify, design, and build additional rain gardens. Um, so that is the process right now, we requested an extension um, with CBT, a six-month extension, which is granted until April 30th of this year. And in that process, um, like I mentioned, we're in that process right now, where we're trying to identify, oh, you know, an addition, an additional location or to um, finish all the expenses on for the grant. And um, that's where we're at with that right now, and I know there was some discussions as well, um, with some tree, trees being in the rain garden locations, so we are gonna be in the process of like communicating with the tree commission, having them involved in the process, and the mayor and council as well, so we'll be showing you the plans of the locations um, that we identify and move forward that way, so we all can communicate and come to an agreement before we confirm the location. Um, the next one brings me to the rain, I'm sorry, not the rain gardens, let's move past the rain gardens, the tree maintenance. So we finished the tree maintenance for the winter, which was completed about, almost two weeks ago. So that has been completed as of today. Um, we've had mostly, um, we had a few tree prunings, because as you know, Pepco was in the city and they did a lot of tree pruning, so we only had about three locations that we did um, for tree prunings, and then most of the other um, trees have been removals. So that has been completed. Um, as far as the waste collection, I did take your feedback, I did add the last tipping um, totals from quarter one, which was $20,000, and then compared to the, this quarter, quarter two. So you can see the difference of what is, which is not much of a difference. And then lastly, um, just miscellaneous projects that we do throughout the winter time, which is of course our leaf collection, we service our um, vehicles during the winter season, thankfully, you know, we've been kind of lucky with not having snow this season, but it's still, you know, it's still early, we still have time in the winter. Uh, so we've done, uh, my team has been doing great, you know, they continue to do a great job with the community, with, community with their waste collection and everything they do in the city, so that's what holds up the department, so I do appreciate um, the team and everyone that I work with. And that pretty much concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Rosio, and um, thank you also for taking the feedback and putting the information on, because it was important for us to see where we're at when it comes to the, the tipping fees. I know there wasn't increase, but I'm definitely glad to also see there was an increase in recycling, so that, that makes, I'm sure that makes, uh, Councilmember Chesek very happy. Because I'm being bombarded by my cats. All right, so we're gonna go backwards, uh, so Jared, Valerie, GB, and Luke, go ahead, Jared.
No, uh, thank you very much, Rosio, I really appreciate all the work you're doing, I know your teams uh, you know, handles, handles a lot, uh, both on a weekly ba, daily and weekly basis, uh, and on a seasonal basis as well. And I appreciate your follow-up on um, some of the uh, you know, some of the uh, issues um, that residents have brought to attention, including some uh, the rain, rain gardens uh, that were, uh, most of which have worked fantastic, um, and uh, really working great, and really do a good job pulling water away, but uh, ones that uh, have had some issues as you discovered, and thank you for your responsiveness and your um, uh, and your thoughtfulness in um, addressing, addressing those when they come up. So uh, thanks again, and um, always appreciate you and your team.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Valerie?
Yeah, thank you, Rosio, um, just a quick question on the Chesapeake Bay Trust Grant, um, we have $47,000 left, I guess. Um, can any of those funds go to like a maintenance contract of rain gardens or anything like that? I know there's a number of them that will need maintenance this coming spring. I know you're thinking through all the, you know, budget options, but I'm just thinking if there's room in the grant for that, that might be an option.
Um, that was um, a question that I brought up with Mike, uh, which is the engineer that I work with, with Echo Site. Um, unfortunately, because of the, the grant, it doesn't allow us to use it for that, um, that's where we had to veer off and stay within the scope of what we applied for, which is applying it towards building rain gardens, which that, the extension was approved for. So we had to stay within that scope of work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie, Jimmy?
Uh, just thank you, Rosio, for everything. That's it.
They do get shorter by the, by the minute, uh, Luke, go ahead.
Thank you, Rosio, so much, um, these reports are great, all the work you're doing is great. Um, love seeing the quarterly, over-quarterly data, I think that's just really helpful. Um, when, you know, I get questions about, well, what does our trash look like compared to last year? I can kind of point them to this data, um, and just really appreciate it, and appreciate you, and thank you, and for being here so late, so. Um, yeah, appreciate you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, so Rosio, um, I was gonna say, no, thank you so much, because as the city um, is working on the efforts of composting, this data will allow us to see what the impact is when it comes to our trash and. what the impact is when it comes to our trash and recycling. And that way, you know, we were able to make better arguments on why it's so important for us to continue, um, reducing our, you know, our current footprint, but definitely also when we go for grants, it allows for people to see like, here's what it used to be in here, here's where it is. And this is why it's important that we move forward to it. You think I echoes everybody's, uh, um, you know, thanksness for, um, how responsive you guys are. I know you guys are usually like, you know, along with PD, like the first people that go out there in case of an emergency. So thank you guys so much, um, for that. Um, and as well, I'm looking forward to partnering with you. Um, I know we discussed, uh, Richardson Park coming up and getting our junior mayors like all lined up and ready to go. We had progress presentations, so they're eagerly waiting, um, waiting when this will come around. But, um, it's far of us like getting the, the young, uh, the youngsters from elementary, middle school and high school involved in making decisions for our city. Cause that is like, um, what we're trying to do, you know, making sure we build leaders, right? So it's very exciting to see it. And obviously Mayor and Council, um, uh, take out all the kids, all of our kids out to come and vote for, um, what their favorite, uh, choice, choices are for playground and that way they're also heavily invested. So thank you for that. Please extend the thank you to your team because we know, um, even through the hardest times of the pandemic and everything else, they have been responsive and it never became a health emergency when it came to trash and recycle and everything else, because they were always, um, they were always there for us. Okay? So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. And if you're not on the agenda, you tomorrow. Okay? Um, all right. Moving on to the next item, uh, presentation and discussion, the second quarterly financial report. The American Council received a presentation from Ronald Wilson, finance cons- I know, so used to calling you Ron, uh, Ronald Wilson, Finance Consultant. Uh, round the floor is yours.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, uh, like last time, I'm not going to go line by line on the financial report. Uh, but I do want to hit some highlights and then of course, any questions that you have, I'll, I'll answer for you. On the revenue side, um, we, the, the real estate taxes, um, for the first half of the year are running about a hundred and ten thousand dollars more than last year at the same time. Uh, so based on that, we're thinking that we'll be real close to budget, the five point one million dollars for the budget at the end of the year. Um, for, uh, line item forty-one oh eight, the shared state income tax, we are running fifty-one thousand ahead of where we were at this time last year. Uh, I'm projecting we should end up somewhere around eight hundred thousand. Um, we're getting ready to start the spring cycle a- as people file their returns for calendar year twenty-two, we'll start getting revenue from the state for those. The speed cameras, uh, which are, um, line forty-five oh six. We're, um, we're currently at four hundred and fifty-one thousand. Uh, of that sixty-six thousand is from old collections, uh, that, that we sent to a collection agency. Um, and then through mid-February, just to give you an update, we're at five hundred and seventy-three thousand. Uh, ninety-five thousand of that is from collections. We are seeing a bit of a slowdown in the last few months in our collections. Um, it's hard to tell if that's permanent or not. Uh, so I'm going to say that we're finishing out the year between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred thousand is very likely at this point. Um, we could get lucky and get a little more. These three revenue items alone represent six and a half million of our seven point eight million dollar operating budget. So of the remaining one point three million, uh, a little bit more than eight hundred thousand of that is the residential licenses and the state highway user fees. And I'm projecting that, that those will be right about on budget by the end of the year. So from a revenue standpoint, we're in good shape. Uh, we, we don't have uh, a significant amount of excess revenue. We, we seem to have budgeted fairly closely. We, uh, you're not taking into account the, the grants at all, but just from an operating standpoint, we should probably be two hundred thousand or so, uh, above budget by the end of the year, give or take. Obviously, when we do the third quarter, we'll have a much better idea of how we'll finish out the year. Um, when we see more data on the, the real estate taxes and the shared state income tax and the speed cameras as well. Over on the expense side, um, the salaries and benefits, what multiple line items here, about a dozen line items. We are trending below budget at this point in time. Um, we did have some vacancies in the first half of the year, plus the, um, the, um, pension contribution that we made, uh, at the end of the year was a good bit below what we had projected it to be. Um, if you see line fifty-one oh seven, retirement contribution, that is our annual contribution. There won't be any additional expense on that in this fiscal year. So it will finish out the year fifty-eight thousand below budget. Um, I would also direct your attention to line fifty-four oh three, audit charges. Uh, we budget thirty-nine and we have incurred seventy-seven thousand. Uh, and that's because in this fiscal year, we paid for two audits, uh, fiscal twenty-one and fiscal twenty-two. Um, now that we're back on schedule with our audits, uh, every year from now on, we will only see audit fees for one year's audit at a time. And then, uh, lines fifty-five, ten, eleven and twelve, these are our, our various tax credits. Um, we processed eleven and a half thousand dollars of historic preservation credits in the fall. Uh, obviously that's more than we budgeted for. Um, the homeowner's tax credit and the veterans' credits will be processed in the spring. Uh, and at this point, we, we don't know what sort of, um, application volume we're going to get. Uh, but we do have a fairly significant amount budgeted for that. So we're pretty confident that'll cover what we, uh, what we end up with. Uh, and those are the highlights for the second quarter financial report. So I, um, will take questions.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, uh, we're going to start with Jimmy, Luke, uh, Jared, Valerie, go ahead.
You know, I don't have a lot of questions because we're about to go into a budget, you know, session. So I think I'll probably say most of my questions as we look at next year's budget. But thank you.
All right, Luke?
Yeah, just a question of, are we going to need to be doing a, an any budget amendment to sort of account for any of the differences that we see um, on the expense side, um, as we move forward or, or does that get taken care of another way?
Um, yeah, we, we should have room within every department's budget to absorb any particular line item. Uh, but as we get just a little bit deeper into the year, we'll reevaluate that and see.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jared, Valerie?
Uh, no. Yeah, sorry about that. Um, uh, no additions or no questions, sorry.
Thank you so much, Valerie.
I have all the questions. No kidding. Um, no, I do, I do have a lot of questions, but I will save some of them for our budget hearings. Um, I guess one question, um, is we don't have, I mean, one statement, I guess, is we don't really have any expense right now in the economic development line under expenses. Um, and then also in capital projects, it looks like we've spent eighty-five thousand and we only budgeted fifty thousand. Um, but some of those questions can be answered in detail, just one-on-one, I think. So.
Sure. Are you talking about line fifty-seven hundred capital projects?
Yeah.
Yeah, that the, a very significant portion of eighty-five thousand is, is, uh, for grant activity that was coded to capital projects and the grant activity would have been budgeted for on a grant expense line.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And, and if you wish, um, I, I can go through the methodology of that during our budget meeting.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Ron. Can you make sure a little paragraph as such is, is added that lets people know that we're using wide that that is? Uh, because it will facilitate it for the budget, um, because the budget we should be able to myself or the, or the community be able to pick it up and know why it's like that. So I don't want it to just stuck to a meeting, but also make sure that even if it's a two-liner. Uh, so that will understand why it's there. You think I put a, put a, I put a message on the, on the chat, so I wouldn't forget to ask, um, can you go back to how much money has been given in, um, in credits, please?
Sure. The, this is through December. Um, so line fifty-five, ten. Um, we've done eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars in historic preservation credits.
Okay. And you have homeowner tax credit. We haven't done those yet, right? Those are coming in right now?
The, those are starting to come in now and, and those get processed, uh, in the spring. Sure. So, uh, late, late third quarter or early or fourth quarter.
I think I would definitely ask you, this is something that they done in the past where they put out the various credits the cities have gave so that we're residents, none of this, the money we're giving back when it comes to the veteran, historical and homeowner tax credit for, um, where we communications to create a slide of that shows how much money has been returned back to the residents. Okay? Because it's important for them to know the one, this, this is happening and two, like if they qualify, they will supply. All right?
Okay.
All right. So just make a note and I could work with you guys, but it, it did it before. All right. Uh, then that, um, previously regarding the January of today, um, budget numbers, I definitely need to see that email as, as I go into, um, into the budget calendar. So we have more information. And when are the reports for the next quarter due? The, the, are you aware for the budget?
Uh, for third quarter, um, they would be, uh, late in April. Uh, I don't know the exact meeting date.
Okay. Cause next Tuesday, we're seeing the budget. So I definitely would like to see January numbers. Um, ideally, cause I know you sent a message saying that, um, you guys were wrapping up the numbers. So that will have.
So the January, January numbers are still being reviewed. Um, I, I will get that information to you. Um, I, I'm hesitant though to, to present, um, non-finalized numbers in, in open meeting. You know, um, knowing that, that there would be changes to them later.
Uh, that's fine. We asked for it, for us to review them internally. So that will be prepared for the budget. That's, um, that's what the email was, not to present it for this meeting, was just for us to review them. So that way, um, we could start thinking and being in the same page. Cause the budget season is one of those that will go super fast and it feels super long. It's a kind of odd the way it feels like. So we are having a meeting this Tuesday. So that will, we could start at least preparing to figure out what, what it looks like. So when you guys bring this information, we're more, we're closer to be more in the same page than the December numbers. Okay? But thank you. All right. So those are mine. And if council, you, you're, you're at ease with any of the other ones, we'll let Ron go because he has, he has work to do for next Tuesday as well. Okay?
I'm, I'm staying for the next agenda item, but thank you.
Uh, my, my last final word, just like I told you the ones, you're, you're dismissed unless you're the, on the agenda. All right. Thank you. So, thank you so much. Oh yeah, you are. There you go. Discussion ordinance all two dash twenty twenty-three budget amendment number two, Mayor Council will have a discussion on ordinance number all two dash twenty twenty-three budget amendment. So Ron, the floor is yours again.
Okay. Um, I think Melissa's going to bring it up. Okay. So based on feedback that, that, uh, we received in, in our last meeting, we have redone the format of this budget, uh, amendment, um, to be similar to how it's been done in the past. Uh, so at the beginning, what we have are, uh, budget amendments to increase revenue. Uh, the first is the state police aid. Um, that's been, you know, discussed already, uh, to revise the budget to what the state says they're giving us. Um, we also have an item for, uh, additional or for the sale of police property. This was part of the discussion on, um, purchasing vehicles for the police department as well as the insurance damage recovery, uh, that they're, um, expected to receive. After that, we have several grant items, uh, where we are budgeting for the grant revenue uh, that wasn't previously budgeted for. And that makes up the rest of the, uh, revenue items. And then Melissa, if you scroll down, uh, the next section are increases in expenses. Uh, this section is all grant expenses and these amounts are equal to the grant revenue in the previous section. Melissa, if you scroll down, okay? Then in addition, as part of the, um, police, uh, vehicle project, we are, uh, amending the budget to give them a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars to purchase vehicles. Uh, there was three vehicles for fiscal twenty-two. Um, the next line item is, um, taking fifty thousand, ninety dollars from the contingency budget and giving it to the police department for supplies and equipment. This is an additional request that they have. And then the last one is using one hundred thousand dollars of fund balance to pay for, uh, the mul- the, the various grant matching obligations that we have. So that is the budget amendment as it currently stands.
Thank you so much. I'm going to open the floor, Jimmy, and see your hand up. Go ahead.
Uh, the, the grant, uh, the hundred grand was for the, uh, basically for the, uh, facade. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Right. Uh, the second thing, just do you know, not contingency, how much we have in reserves will come up in the, uh, budget here, you know?
Uh, no, but I will, uh, I'll be preparing a, um, um,
We have two things, contingency and we have reserves, but I'm just.
It, it is, um, I'm going by memory here. Uh, it, it's in excess of four million dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Depending on whether you use budgetary basis or GAAP basis, they are different numbers, but.
Right. Well, I, I think I'd be discussing it and prepare everybody because it pops along, what we're going to do. But that's another, for another day. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Thank you, Jimmy, for bringing those up. So yeah, make sure we know the balance of both when something is presented to us, so we could make better decisions. Uh, Valerie, Luke, Jared?
Um, thank you for going into more detail on all of these things. Um, I think it's very, very helpful to see the current budget, the adjustment and the revised budget. I think it's helpful, um, in looking at these things, but I don't have anything else at this point. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Luke, Jared?
Yeah, Ron, thank you so much for being here, staying late with us. Um, as always, um, you're doing great work here, um, with the finance department. So just thank you for everything and appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Jared, thank you, Luke.
Yep. Thanks. Uh, no, thanks a bunch, Ron, for being, staying here late, especially tonight. I know it was much later than usual. Uh, thanks for this overview. I don't have any additional questions right now. I'm looking forward to the budget discussion, uh, coming up.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, Ron, thank you so much for making it. It's obviously a lot clearer and it definitely will have saved me like thirty minutes with those numbers. Um, so question for you is two things. Um, for the contingency fund, is there a reason why we're taking it out from there and not any other line item?
Uh, uh, well, because of the size of it, um, that was a convenient place to take it from. Um, yeah, right now, um, before that, any budget modification, we have two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in contingency. Um, and then, uh, after all the budget mods are done, we'll have two hundred and sixty-two. So.
Okay. I definitely always like to stay within the budget. So if you guys could like look into anything PD, to even reduce that number definitely will have helped. So that way we know, even if it's like unused salaries. So that way we could, um, we, we call work on budgeting, um, properly for, for that department. And it definitely facilitates it for the future. So we know like more or less where, where we're at. Okay?
Yeah, we can, we can look into other opportunities for, for, um, for finding the fifty. We can, we can look into other opportunities for, for, um, for finding the fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, cuz I know PD money or safety, uh, money, it's very limited to what it could be used. So I definitely always encourage for us to utilize anything that has to do with police with, with the funding if possible, because, um, it, it's limited, um. But thank you for putting this format. I mean, it's very easier to, to read it and go through it, okay? Melissa, can you put it to the top? And this is like, um, this is our first reading?
Hello, mayor, we had the first reading last week. So this is just a discussion from the recommendation from our last meeting, so it's gonna go for a vote at our next legislative meeting.
Thank you so much.
Why not tonight?
So this is a work session, so it's this. I just wanted to make sure it was clear cuz it, 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 this was like, it threw me off for a minute. I was like, wait a minute, I know, I know we skipped the meeting. But yeah, no, it was here for work sessions, so it's gonna be, uh, going for the second reading on our next meeting in March, correct, Melissa?
Yes, mayor.
Thank you, Melissa, and thank you, Ron. And is this your final item tonight, Ron?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Have a good night and thank you for staying and for your work you, you done and, um, I will be touching bases with you so that we could figure out when is, um. With you guys, it's like when is the audit, um, firm, uh, contract expiring? So that what we could like look at that ahead of time to, to get that moving, cuz that could definitely affect the, us having the success, um. That we've been having. I, I can't remember when it's like two or three years, so if it's gonna be expiring pretty soon, okay?
Yeah, so, um, Mr. Kamali and I will have some information for you.
Thank you so much for that, so that we like mayor council could, you know, move forward whatever, whatever legislative end we need to, so if you guys could let us know as soon as possible. So we're ready for that as well, okay?
Will do.
Thank you so much.
We will have something by Friday to you.
Thank you so much. Alright, so moving on, and guys, I'm sorry, I feel like they're burning in fire. You guys know how sensitive my vision is lately. Um, moving on to item number seven, discussion and support for Maryland State Traffic Safety Legislation. An HB three sixty-seven, HB three fifty-three, and HB seventy, and HB. Ninety-four, and this are all House bills. Uh, the mayor council have a discussion on the support for Maryland State Traffic Safety Legislation. And Jared, I'm gonna give you, um, the mic, so that way, um, you could briefly describe what, what they are and. I know you have been working hard on letters of support and you have met with the chief as well, so go ahead, Jared, the floor is yours.
Yeah, can I share my screen real quick?
No, that's kidding. Melissa, can you grant him, uh, sharing permission, please?
So this is, um, the.
Go ahead.
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple bills, um, currently in the House and, uh. What I wanted to do is just, uh, have a brief discussion and I think we're all gonna, I think we're all gonna be directional in support of these. Um, so there's four and they all relate to basically improving traffic safety. Giving us the flexibility to address track, traffic safety, pedestrian safety and so forth, um. The first, there's really two that are, um, very similar, HB three sixty-seven. It's a, would give us the ability, give local jurisdiction like us the ability to use a stop sign, uh, do cameras at stop signs. Uh, if, if we were to authorize them locally, uh, currently we're not allowed, uh, you can, we're, we are only able to have them at locations, uh, where they are like on Route One. Uh, on a state highway, um, next to the school, so, um, this would allow us to do a stop sign camera if we so chose to. Um, I, this is important. We have significant speeding problems throughout the city. We have fifty plus intersections. With stop signs, uh, we only have two to three officers on patrol day one time. I know folks like, folks have seen folks run, um, people run stop signs. And, uh, us being able to place cameras if desired, if appropriate, and if decided by the city. With resident feedback, uh, that would be something we could do to address, uh, the endemic of people speeding. Through our city and also, uh, not observing stop signs, so. That's the first one. The second bill, HB five thirty-five, uh, pretty similar. It's actually traffic control device monitoring system, so that's. Would expand from, would include stop signs, but also include, um, traffic lights and other, um. Uh, we don't have any bus lanes, but in places where we had bus lanes, you could do monitoring as, as well, so, um, basically. The same dynamic, um, same issue. The third one, um, HB ninety-four, uh, this is a. Bill that would allow reduction speed limits to local authorities. It would allow, uh, authorities statewide to decrease the maximum speed limit. To not less the certain speed, that's fifteen miles an hour, um, after performing a certain investigation. Um, so we currently prohibited by state law from lowering our speed limit past a certain point. I want to point out, this is especially an issue because we are adjacent DC. Where, uh, Mayor Bowser has, uh, lowered the speed limit on neighborhood streets to twenty miles an hour. Um, and even Eastern Avenue, which is actually the western side of the city, uh, actually has, has now posted twenty miles an hour signs on, on some segments of it. So this would allow us potentially reduce speeds in our city after an appropriate process. Uh, and more importantly, would allow us to synchronize the speeds within our city, uh, with the speeds coming from DC, so ironically, people. Drive from, if they're driving, they drive in DC, they're bound a certain speed limit upon entering Maryland, they're actually able to speed up because we're not even able to lower. Our speed limit to be consistent with, um, the grid and the speed limit in our neighboring jurisdiction, so, uh, that's the third one. Uh, the fourth one is HB seventy, safe streets for all, uh, this would allow, um. Maryland SHA to basically recommend, implement, um, design, safety elements for pending projects. Uh, these will be based on US DOT's safety, proven safety countermeasures. Um, so it would basically require SHA to have installation plan timeline to establish pedestrian crossings on state highways. And place pedestrian crossings at a minimum of one-fifth mile intervals within or adjacent census tracks for significant transit dependency. Which is us and population density that exceeds ten thousand people per mile, which is also us. Um, really important, as you know, there's three roads that sort of, two of them that bound Mount Rainier, um, east. What, Eastern Avenue, which is owned all by DC. Uh, and then, um, Phoenix Chapel Road along the north and then Route One, um, through the middle. Uh, this would require SHA to, when they're doing any projects to, uh, implement, they would be required to. Instead of having us try to badger and push and ask and beg for countermeasures, um, and safety measures, they would be required to put them in. And, um, and implement them. It's often really difficult to get Maryland SHA to act. It's an agency focused on, um. Uh, vehicle throughput, not necessarily in pedestrian safety. Uh, this would really give us the tools to ensure better accountability and responsiveness, so, um, that's. I don't know if that was five minutes, I don't know if it was that, 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 that short, but. Um, you know, I wanted to talk through those really quick, um. In the process of authoring letters, just wanted to get the sense of counsel. I think I, I'm assuming based on our many conversations in public. On these issues that were, folks would support, um, directionally, the. These bills and just wanted to, uh, get a sense of counsel before I move forward.
Alright, thank you so much. I'm gonna open up the floor to council. We're gonna go Jimmy, Valerie, Luke, um, go ahead, the floor is yours.
I mean, it sounds fine, writing a letter won't do that much. I would actually suggest that we write our, the lobbyist, the green will firm. That the council's taking a position on those things and see.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jimmy, just to clarify, did, and I, Selene did mention this, did talk to chief, did talk through and also talk to our. Um, talked to our lobbyist, um, Leslie at length about all four of these, so, um, they're ready to support and help push, um, if we, if we have consensus.
Alright, perfect. Anything else, Jimmy, or you're good?
Just the same thing to MM, PGCM, MML slate, but you know, we should just let them know. I mean, one town out of, you know, eighty-seven towns doesn't do a lot, that's why.
Yep.
Okay, we, we'll send it to, we'll send to the collective, yay. Alright, next, who was it? Valerie, go ahead.
Yeah, um, Jared, thank you for, uh, researching this and putting it together. It's very helpful to see the synopsis, um. Uh, just one quick question, do any of these, like if we write letters, does this help with our, uh, safe streets for all, um, envision zero plan at all?
I mean, I, I don't think it would hurt, but, uh, you know, we, we support that we support policies. You know, at the, we will support policies once given flexibility at a local level that. That would improve. Yep.
Yep, I think that helps with our grant applications for sure, that we're, we're not only, we're not only, um, supporting it, but we're also, you know, acting on it, so, thank you.
Perfect, Luke?
No, thank you, Jared, for, I appreciate this, um. Um, this is something that I definitely think we want to do as we build out our comprehensive plan for streets and sidewalks is lowering the speed limit, so. Just appreciate your work here and support it, thanks.
Perfect, thank you. So Jared, um, I think you heard from basically all of us, um, to work with them. Um, definitely this will give us the cool, the authority to be able to do certain things that we've been meaning to do. Uh, we definitely are in a particular situation being so close to DC, right? But we're definitely not the exception as we have, uh, people that. Are driving to Route One, like it was a super highway, you know, like their training camp for like NASCAR. Um, so this definitely will help us out. I believe there was one hesitation on one of them from the chief. There was one part of it, um, on it when it came to like, uh, reduction of some fees. Uh, we could like, you know, I, I could submit it through the, to the MGA, um, the Maryland General, um, Assembly, um, on it. Get a question for you, I have is like, are any of these bills, um, in the Senate? Any, any close ones resemble this in the Senate to see if they're gonna go for crossover, or do you have any idea about that? Jared's.
Uh, no, some of them are, uh, have crossovers. Uh, so HB, which, which one is seventy? Yeah, that's SB seven sixteen. And I mean, I can look them up right now, but I, I think, you know, if, if they go through one house, they're likely to go through the other house, but.
Yeah, no, I was just saying so that we could keep it on our radar. I mean, we could always submit, like if it's basically the same bill of both houses, we just. Change that, uh, number of the bill and submit a letter of, of support over there as well.
All, all four, uh, oh, HB three fifty-three. Two of them have crossovers. Do, do you want me just to, uh, put in a text?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll just do that.
So that we could have it in our radar. Obviously, at a certain point, we're gonna have to either need to go testify. Or advocate or in the conversations we're having with other people, like I tend to, um, I'm gonna be going to Annapolis this week, I believe twice. So I, I will still, you know, write those numbers in my list of, of things of, of what the cities, um, the cities advocating as well, so if I, you know, depending who I'm speaking to, I could let them know which one. Which, which way it is as well, okay? Alright, so I know Jared's in the cyber world somewhere, um, so I would say, um. I guess we're all in agreement for him to move forward with the letters, correct? Council, yes, thumbs up? Yes, check, uh, see Valerie, yes, Jimmy, or yes, and Luke, your yes, right? Alright, cool, alright. So Jared, you're not here, but we have homework for you. Alright, so moving on to item number, um, number eight. Discussion of a proposal, operation support for Gateway CDC on a three-year basis, fifteen minutes, constantly, whatever, will present a proposal to mayor and council. On operation support for Gateway CDC, so Valerie, um, the floor is yours, and Melissa, put any, any document that you have up on the screen, thank you.
Sorry, sorry about that, everyone, I got, uh, my Zoom locked up.
Basically say move forward with the letters and Jimmy will send you what, uh, oh, there you go. He will send you the, any bills that he's putting in the text right now, any SB bills, like Senate bills. That are crossover from the other house so that we're aware of it as we're advocating and I'll send them that. I'm gonna be in Annapolis twice this week, so that way, um, if I run to a couple of my friends, um, you know, letting them know that, um. And, and our, obviously our delegation to let them know that this is, uh, stuff that we're interested in support as well, okay? For putting them there as well. So yeah, so move forward with the beautiful letters, okay, and have support from far, 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 far away, okay? If you need me to just like introduce them, okay? Alright, so thank you, Jimmy, for that, so that we're, we're, we're aware of what could go both or, or not if they need to be on it. Alright, thank you. Alright, so moving on to the next item, we were on Gateway CDC, Valerie, I apologize, uh, for that, uh, the first yours.
Thank you, um, yeah, so thank you. So I've only been on council for a little bit, um, just one year almost, um. But, um, I'm the council liaison to the Gateway Community Development Corporation. Um, and so over the past couple of months, we've been talking about how to make sure the Gateway CDC can continue to offer. Um, good programming and build and grow, um, in the Gateway Arts District, which spans from Mount Rainier all the way up to Hyattsville. Um, and so the Gateway CDC, for those are, who are not, um, you know, familiar, is a five oh one C nonprofit organization. Um, that works within the communities of Brentwood, North Brentwood and Mount Rainier at this point. Um, they have property and programs within each jur- jurisdiction. Um, it was founded over twenty-five years ago in nineteen ninety-seven and basically their, their main mantra was so that the Gateway Arts District. District was the heart of the arts beat in Prince George's County, um, and to build kind of an arts district in our communities, Mount Rainier, Brentwood and North Brentwood. Um, and, you know, really strengthen our creative economy. Um, the Gateway CDC has had a lot of success over the last couple of years with open studio tours. The Gateway Media Arts Lab, which hosts over thirty artists in its, um, in its repertoire. Um, they also have a stu- subsequent lab max, magazine, um, which is published, um. Uh, frequently and showcases kind of the talent we have in our communities. Um, they have property management with the Brentwood Arts Exchange and other locations, um, and they're also currently. Working toward a studio, S T U D I O, steward of, stewardship, stewardship trust. For uncommon design and inventive ownership, so that artists can, um, build and own their own studio spaces, so that they, they can build their own equity. Um, and so that they can grow, um, and so with all that great movement that's been happening, they're seeking to strike while the iron's hot. Hot to grow and strengthen their influence and ability to support arts and, um, the economy here in Mount Rainier as well as Brentwood and North Brentwood. Um, however, they don't have dedicated operational support, um, they have, uh, funding from various sources, but it comes and goes and ebbs and flows. Um, and so one of the, um, things that each, um, city council liaison has been working. Toward is coming up with a funding arrangement that would provide funding from each municipality to support the Gateway CDC on a three-year basis. Um, and so, um, what we're proposing is, and I have, you know, I have put into this, um, agenda package. A proposal that kind of goes through all their impacts and what they've done, um, over the years, um, so that you can see kind of. Um, how important they are. They are a cornerstone of our community, um, and, you know, I think it's, it's important for them to. To develop and, and to really have that operational support. And when I say operational support, what does that mean? Um, that means that you have staffing, that you have the ability to, um, you know, produce reports, to go after grants. Um, some of their programming could be grant funded, but right now they don't have the staffing in order to apply for the grants. Report on the grants and to continue to get those, those funding mechanisms in place, um. Um, things like lawyers, um, you know, um, you know, real estate agents for artists and, and things like that, um. So that's the operational side. So we're proposing that, um, you know, the council liaisons from North Brentwood, Brentwood and the city of Mount Rainier. Work together to provide fiscal support at varying levels based on the size and impact to achieve dedicated operational support, um, from each. Um, and right now, we're proposing sixty thousand, um, from the city of Mount Rainier for three years. Brentwood, twenty-five thousand for three years and North Brentwood, about ten to fifteen thousand. Um, and that correlates kind of directly toward how many artists are registered in the Gateway Arts District. Um, in Mount Rainier, you have two hundred and eighty-five thousand, or, I'm sorry, two hundred and eighty-five artists that are participating in the Gateway Arts District. Ninety-three in Brentwood and eighteen in North Brentwood, um, so that's where the funding mechanism kind of comes in, it's based on percentages, um, and size of cities as well. Um, some of, so that's, that's the basic proposal. Some of the way that I think that we can measure their impact. Is through having annual reports that come back to the city councils of each, um, each city council. Um, then, you know, you can look at data, look at, you know, how many grants they're, um, you know, re- um, raising money for. Um, which programs are taking off and growing and building, um, and things like that, um. And, I mean, I, I just think the Gateway CDC is a, is a community development corporation that deserves our attention, um, it deserves our, our commitment. Um, to grow and to build, um, and I think building that through operational support in the city of Mount Rainier can actually do a really. Um, good job to make sure that we have, um, a strong local artist community that can stay here as we, um, are primed for redevelopment. Um, and as we grow as a city, um, so I'll stop there and just get a sense of where city council is and, you know, other things. Um, if you have questions about any of this, um, I'm happy to, um, you know, any questions you might have, I can hopefully answer them and if not, then I can, um. Come back to you later. I just wanted to bring it up before we start our budget process, um, so we can have this discussion and move forward. So we can have this discussion and move forward if that's possible.
Valerie, as a point of clarification, is a six, you're asking for sixty thousand every year or sixty thousand spread within, within the three years, twenty, twenty, twenty?
It would be sixty thousand per year for three years, um, just like in Brentwood, it would be, um, twenty-five thousand per year for three years.
Okay. So I need a doctor. I'll speak after the council, but, um, Jimmy, I saw your hand up. We're going to go Jimmy, Luke and Jared.
Yeah, I've been in an active in Gateway like twenty out of the twenty-five years. It was to treasure Gateway and, uh, involvement. Uh, I'm supportive and if we need to do that, we should do that. But, uh, historically Gateway's gotten grants from the county and other kinds of monies. Over, you know, for years, I'm trying to figure out why that's right up. Also, I don't think, I'm not sure what Hyattsville CDC gets that kind of funding or why, why there are no other grants available. Historically, you know, there have been lots of count, other kinds of grants and fundings to it. So I, I just need a little bit more of a, uh, I'm fine with appropriating. I just need a little bit more of a background, what, why it's come to this place. And I mean, you know, it's a hundred thousand dollars. Does that mean there's no money for staffing from anywhere else? Because historically, CDCs get money from lots of other organizations. So I, you know, I'm not against it. I just think, you know, kind of, I'd like to get a little more of history. What, what, why it's come down to, uh, uh, this and, you know, the more background.
Sure. Um, yeah, I can take that. Um, so I think, um, I mean, right now we have about a, a part-time slash third time executive director for the Gateway CDC and very few staff, um, any, and I think that's something that needs to change. I think we need more staff in order to grow. For example, the Gateway Media Arts Lab has over thirty artists, um, there, um, you know, coming in and out and using the studio space. And I think it would be helpful to have, you know, at least one other dedicated person that would be working on a full-time basis or a part-time basis. I think in terms of, um, finding operational funds, I know the state Department of Housing and Community Development has, you know, has the operational assistance grants and the technical assistance grants that you can go after. However, there are many, many, many nonprofits that, um, apply to those and they're very competitive. And so I think, you know, having a staff member that can apply for that grant funding to begin with, and I think on a three-year basis would help. But I can certainly build, um, a budget into this a little bit more so you can see more.
And a little bit also like what the, what the budget has been over a period of time. And again, I'm not against it and, you know, I'm very supportive of just trying to figure out what's, why it's come to this, you know, after, you know, twenty-four years.
Yeah. All right. Perfect. Thank you, Jimmy. Luke, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Valerie, for doing all this work. I just, and, and other gateways in, in good hands with you being there, helping them all, um, totally support this. One of the things that, um, you know, when I was there, I just never had capacity to kind of, um, give as much as I think I want, probably wanted to and should have, and that was, that was my fault. But, um, you know, I, I hope some of this money can also get used to, um, sort of think through, if there could be like some sort of investment vehicle for the CDC. I know it has property that, that it owns where its office space there, there is on Brentwood. But is there a chance to partner with a developer, um, on, 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 on building something there where they could get some, maybe profit sharing agreement there, um, give away the property for not a lot in order to do some sort of profit sharing, or if that's possible elsewhere. I, I, you know, I, I see that opportunity down the line and some development that might be able, we might be able to partner with them on in the city, um, especially once we get this pot's all done. So I think just having a mind towards that will be helpful. So just to, you know, take that into consideration as they, as, as far as what to use this money for. But definitely supportive because I think a lot of people in the city don't realize how good Gateway, how much good Gateway is doing in the community. And, you know, hopefully this can also be an opportunity for Gateway to sort of trumpet that, that more, um, in these communities as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Luke. Jared?
Yeah, no, thank you, Valerie. I, uh, you know, I think Gateway is a, is a treasure in our community. You know, I, I served on the board, um, from about twenty twelve till twenty fifteen. I really, you know, keenly aware of the importance, the work they do and, um, and, and really kind of growing art space economic development in the, uh, in the city. And I also having worked on the board there and for other nonprofits know the challenges of, you know, jumping from year to year of program-based grant, but not having sort of the core operating funding that it's often very difficult to get when you're, um, when you're, uh, you know, when you're, when you're, um, when you're a nonprofit, people want to have grants for programs and specific costs, but not sort of the core operating piece. So I, you know, I'm supportive directionally of this, um, of having, you know, helping Gateway kind of get a sort of steady, steady anchor that's going to allow them to really, uh, do a lot of the work, um, that we, that we need to see in the, in the corridor. And that historically Gateway sometimes, you know, depending on the ebb and flow of grants, been able or not able to deliver. So, um, I did want to ask, uh, is, you know, this is a three-year ask, is the, is the idea to have enough capacity at the end of the three years to, I guess, not come back for, you know, I, I guess another, an ongoing, um, request or what's the, what's the vision?
Yeah, I think, um, um, if I can do that, um, if, um, I think one of the, um, ideal, ideal scenario would be that within three years, they get to a place where Luke was talking about where they have a funding, a shared funding, you know, profit, um, thing. But I think, you know, funding your, uh, you know, corporate development, your, you know, community development corporation to help, you know, kind of do some of the work that needs to be done around telling the story of our Gateway Arts District. I mean, Hyattsville CDC has, um, you know, done a great job with Arts District Hyattsville, right? But the Gateway Arts District, you know, Mount Rainier, Brentwood, North Brentwood can sometimes, um, feel a little bit left behind in that. And I think, um, making sure that our communities are strong and our, our artists are able to continue to come here and to grow here. You know, for example, like Gateway CDC, a lot of people probably don't know that they get off for, um, some below market rents, um, for artists. So we were just talking about rent stabilization. Well, artists need spaces that they can afford as well. And so, you know, that's a great value that they offer to our community and that's an impact that artists will feel that maybe you don't until you go to the open studio tour in May, right? So, um, I just think that that's, that's, um, an important cornerstone to our, our area. And I think, um, you know, if, if we can get to a point in three years that they're rocking and rolling without any additional funding from the cities, I think that's a great thing and I think that would be something to look forward to. Um, I think that's why I would want to require that they have, you know, yearly annual reports that come out after their audits so we can see where they are financially and see where they are programmatically. Um, and then at the end of the three years, we can determine, you know, whether or not as a city, you know, we want to continue working on this, but I think that's something definitely to look forward to working through. And but, but you need staff to do that, right? So you need staffing, um, in order to grow, so.
Thank, thank you. Did that cover your question, Jared?
It does. Yep.
So I think some of the questions already been covered, some of the stuff. So two things, yeah, I definitely would like to see the financials to figure out where this is going. Everything is like this heavily depends on my rent, you're putting a big chunk of the money. And I need to know where the other two cities are, um, because if they're not in there, our little money is not going to make a difference. The third thing to me is like, we cannot commit future council members to money. So definitely this is not something guaranteed because every single year we put a budget on and we have to vote on approve it. As a matter of fact, you know, so that's something that I know we had, um, that we had discussed in the past, um, when it came to, um, putting certain money, like, you know, allocated, especially for the city budget. So, I mean, I think that especially three years, it's like you have elections in May, you have elections in two years and three of us are out, right? So the honest truth is like, you know, that year is a year-to-year commitment mainly because of that, because at any point any of the council could decide like this is not what they want to do. So I want to make sure we're clear, a hundred percent clear on that, right? So it's not like, okay, it's written into the budget and if it goes, um, it is year, year-to-year, we approve it and it could be, it could be out. But, um, so my thing is like, I want to know what the commitment is for the other cities, where are they looking? Where the plans are, because to me it's like, if it's three years or two years, right? Where they're trying to pull themselves together to get to the other spot, it will be, it's one thing. But the other thing is like, are they heavily depending just on the city to fund this or, or what the goal is? So definitely need to hear the, the vision, the mission, the financials, you know, how's it going and where the other cities are at. And but definitely we'll say revisit the three-year commitment because it might not be, um, what we could, um, compromise ourselves to, because like I said, every year the, the, the budget is voted on. And basically pending on where the council members are at, um, that's, that's where that, that will be. So I just want us to be aware. And the other thing is like, I know they have various properties, the city of Mount Rainier, if I'm mistaken, does pay rent. Mr. Kamali, we do pay rent in one of the properties, right? Like, you, you recall how much you said that we pay a rent in, in one of the properties?
Which property are you talking about?
We CDC property where our welcome center is slash economic development, um, building.
Yeah, we pay, we pay eleven hundred dollars per month for Ron Hopkins' office.
So I, I just want us to make sure we, we are conscious that we have been, we have been contribute for, uh, for that space also, um, also there and also providing like, you know, programming on behalf of the city. So that's something to also, um, oh, thank you, Michelle. That's P G A C H. Thank you for the clarification. So, um, so let's make sure that we could get that information in front so that we could make better decisions and figure out what it looks like and also what the commitment is for the other cities as well.
Can I just, um, for the other cities? So we have, um, had consistent conversations between the council liaisons on to the Gateway CDC. Brentwood will be putting the same proposal or similar proposal to their council in the next few weeks. Um, and North Brentwood also is committed to, um, right now I have fifteen thousand dollars in that line, but, um, they are committed to ten to fifteen thousand. And I want to just reiterate that some of this follows the size of the cities, right? As well as the, um, the current impact that the Gateway CDC can potentially have in the Gateway Arts District. For example, there's two hundred and eighty-five participating artists in Mount Rainier, ninety-three in Brentwood and fourteen in North Brentwood. So the, the, the size of the funding is tied to those numbers as well as to the size of the cities. And I agree, um, I definitely know that we can't one thousand percent commit unless we have an MOU between the three cities or some kind of memorandum of agreement between the three cities, um, for a three-year period. I think that is something worth exploring though, just so that we can ensure that they have dedicated funding, um, for that operational. So they can, you know, so they can build themselves and grow. But I am certainly committed to working toward building, uh, I can build out a budget and projections with Gateway CDC. And make sure that we have that information, um, knowing full well that, you know, in two years it might not be there. But we, I think we should, should try and get to that point.
Yeah. The other thing is like when we had that discussion, um, previously when, when they came in, I know Michelle was one of the ones that had presented. You know, um, even talking to, um, to the other cities, like they were not, um, because one thing is the proposal, uh, that's been submitted from us, you guys, the city representatives into it. And one thing is for the cities to say, you know what, you guys may be proposing, let's say example, right, fifteen, but the city only compromised to five, right? Like, so that's something that I did hear, like in the prior one, they were not there with the numbers. So I want to make sure that also, um, we do not build it into a face, you know, um, what's it called? A very thin, uh, castle cars that we're thinking, okay, this is going to happen. So that's something beyond it. And when it comes to it, like, you know, the other question that, that was asked last time as well was like, what exactly are, are we getting for, for this, for this amount? Like, what is the commitment from Gateway CDC? So I think it's a great start and thank you for putting this together. I know you, um, you were, you were, um, doing some, um, um, other, other activities like during this weekend and you managed to pull this together. So thank you for that. It's, it's a very, very thick document. But yeah, so if you could help us out with that information to continue this conversation, it definitely will be helpful. So Jimmy, go ahead.
Just Michelle Lee is on the chat. I was wondering if Mayor, she wanted maybe to say anything and she's been active.
Oh, thank you, Jimmy. Michelle, the floor, the floor is yours.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Just, I just wanted to say thank you for your support. I know, um, each of you all have visited the lab specifically, um, and are very familiar with the work that Gateway does. So we can certainly get all of your questions answered. I did want to clarify that you all do not pay rent to Gateway. You pay it to the Prince George's Arts and Humanities Council, so.
Thank you.
And that's it. If you have any questions, um, you know, I'll be chatting with Valerie, but you can reach out to me as well.
Thank you, Michelle. Do you guys have any questions for me? I know, Michelle, thank you for staying up with us. Uh, do you have any questions for Michelle? Luke, Jimmy, all of them. You guys are good. So, well, I think Valerie took outstanding notes, if not Melissa took outstanding notes. So that will present over like the various questions that we have and we definitely would like to hear from the other cities where they're at to figure out what are more, more or less like, um, how, how are they feeling as, as they're entering the budget season and what can they do? And, and cannot do, you know, because they're in a position, so they're going, um, I believe both Brentwood and North Brentwood might be going for elections for the mayor's in May. And they go on elections every two years. And for Brentwood, the whole slate goes on in elections, like it's not, they're not, um, starker like us. So every single member of their, um, team is going in elections in May and then in elections in two years. So there, um, that might be, um, uh, just as a point of reference, uh, that might be a limitation of what, um, what that, that goes to look like when it comes to the two versus, versus the three. Okay?
Um, can I just say one more thing? So I think one of the, one of the reasons I think this type of proposal is a good one generally is because in the past, they've come and asked for funding for certain programs, like specific programs, right? I think, um, that's good, but you can get grant funding specifically for programs versus, um, operations. It's hard to get operational support, um, from grants, um, that can carry you through program to program to program. And so that's part of why I think this is quite important. But, um, I will work with the Gateway CDC, Michelle, I'll work with you on kind of forecasting next steps and what we can do. I think we need to put together a budget projection, uh, for the city councils to look at as well as, um, proposal for operational support. So I will, we can put that together, um, and then come back, um, and continue the conversation through the budget season if we need to.
Yeah. So thank you so much, Valerie. So yeah, so basically, um, get, gather more information and we'll see you guys in the next work session. I guess that's a, that's a short ten oh four PM answer to that question. All right. So thank you, Valerie. Thank you, Michelle, also, um, for being here for all the information provided. Okay? All right. So if we have no other thing, can we move on to the next, um, point? And this is ARPA discussion update number twenty-five. You hear this twenty-five. The Mayor and Council would discuss the status of projects, including funds for homeowners repairs assistance. So for the ARPA funding, we have decided to address, not do an update, we'll do that for a different meeting. But, um, there is a proposal, um, as you guys are aware, the Mayor and Council, um, allocated funds for rental assistance. It was fifty thousand, uh, dollars and it went on three rounds. And we did, um, instruct our city manager that if the third round needed more fundings to come and let us know so that we could, um, we could have a discussion to allocating more funds. Uh, so as of right now, it was close to seven thousand dollars that are needed from applications that qualify, but we have run out of funding. So Mayor and Council, this is basically, um, I need to hear from you guys if you guys want to allocate more funding. I know, see who's like already up from like not going to bed, right? Guilty as charged. Mayor, Mayor and Council, I recall that, um, so can we open up the discussion on, on that point when it comes to, um, do you guys want to allocate more funds? And if it's so, let's move it through the process, um, from work session to put it in the legislative session to allocate more funding. Okay? Luke, I see you, um, you could go first. Jared, Valerie, Jimmy, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it was, we were, we were short by like four thousand something. So I think if we just add five thousand to, to it from that ARPA funding stream, I think we'd be, we'd be fine and I'd support that. Um, I am hesitant on, um, just on a general ARPA fund. I know Jimmy's mentioned this in the past, but saving some money in ARPA for some of the, um, priority projects that come out of the street and sidewalk study will be important because I know a lot of residents who want traffic calming stuff or, or waiting stuff. So I don't want to take too much from ARPA, but I think this could be doable easily. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Jared?
Yep, I concur with Luke's, uh, points and I agree.
Jimmy?
Uh, yes, I had a proposal about, uh, something about homeowners, uh, assistance, but I'll hold it off to the next work session. Somebody in Brentwood does and these people here raised, people who seniors and other people have money to repair their houses and thus have to sell their houses. And that might be something we should consider like fifty grand for that, but why we hold it off to the next work session.
So I'll go Valerie and yeah, I agree, I agree with you, Jimmy. We need to put some money towards that. Go ahead. Valerie, the floor is yours.
I agree with Luke and Jared.
All right. Perfect. So, um, I think that Mr. Kamali was the five thousand. All right, perfect. So I think that Mr. Kamali, was the five thousand, five thousand will be enough? Or was it more?
No, yes, Mayor, because the deadline was February fifteen and we're almost short for five thousand dollars.
But five thousand dollars will cover it, right? To like for this round. Want to make sure we can go back and we're like a penny off.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So the next step is, Melissa, can you please make sure you put this on the legislative meeting that's coming up so that we could like officially vote on it, seeing that we're all in agreement to put an extra five thousand dollars on it and up to five thousand dollars. How about that? So that would cover what it needs to cover. I definitely will, will, would like for us to have the discussion, even if it's in the list, that just at a meeting when it comes to the home. I did talk to quite a, quite a bit of seniors through my journey through rent stabilization. There are also homeowners that told me about like the fact that we need, they were very happy about the veteran tax credit, quite a few of them have been coming in. I seen a couple of them, I talked to a couple of them and I sent a couple of them. And I know Jimmy has done, been doing a terrific job of sending people over as well. But yeah, they also need help with rent. And I think that this, the last one we had was very much focused for renters. This one definitely needs to be focused on when it comes to homeowners. And I know Valerie's working on something and I know Brentwood has established some, some, a program as well. So be good tools to look at them, how do they work it out? Because they're a smaller municipality and they're already having money being put out when it comes to helping when it comes to repairs of homes as well. So that might be something to look into as well. Kamali, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
This is Mayor. I just want to ask you because the next legislative meeting, it's going to be sometimes in March. I'm sorry? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The next legislative meeting is going to be sometimes in March. And we have the application, so I just want to let you know that we have to hold on on those checks and we cannot issue anything unless you guys allow me to go ahead and move forward.
Message, we have a short legislative session. We have a session for next week.
Yeah.
I mean, on next Tuesday, a hundred percent. So we'll put it right there, Mr. Kamali. But we have to like formally vote on it. I don't want us to like not do that. Get ourselves in, in trouble. So on Tuesday, we are having it, so put it on to that, just, just for one item, guys.
Okay, thank you.
One item, Melissa. Okay? But if, so that will be, we're able to take care of it. But Mr. Kamali, obviously, you heard that we're all, it's an open meeting, so we're in full support of this. So it's more of like a technicality of voting. So if you could like take care of all of that, so that way like we vote on Tuesday and they're literally released on, on Wednesday, okay? So that we could get it on before, as soon as possible, before the end of the month. Okay, Luke?
Thank you.
Your hand up.
Yeah, sorry. You may, yeah, I, I may have just missed it. You may have just said it. The, as long as we have, I, I think we've been in the past when we've had consensus, city manager can kind of move forward and then we'll just vote, do the vote later.
Thank you.
That, that's basically what I said. It's like, put everything together. We'll vote on Tuesday and then send the checks on Wednesday. But it's, we have consensus at this point. Okay? So. So we're, sorry, guys, somebody knocked on my window and they left something. The beautiful things about being a mayor, right? Okay, so moving on, so we're in consensus, we're good. And then we'll work on the next meeting when it comes to, when it comes to the, the homeowners. But Valerie, if you need any support, let us know. And if Jimmy, if we're also thinking of something else, we could work on it as well. So that way there could be more than one proposal, one for repairs and one for mortgage if, if we need be. Okay? All right. So moving on to item number ten. So Mr. Kamali, you're, you're clear with direction, right? You're good?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Okay, perfect. So we have presentation of minutes. The city clerk will present the following minutes to Mayor and Council, January seventeen, twenty twenty-three, February fifth, twenty twenty-three, February seventh, twenty twenty-three. This is special legislature meeting, work session, specialization meeting and legislation. This is just a presentation. Council, look over them. If there's any adjustments that need to be made, please make them, submit them to Melissa as soon as possible so her and her team could look into them and edit them. And this will be up for vote on the March election, March election, oh my goodness, in the March meeting. Correct, Melissa? Yes, we're good?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, perfect. So please submit it as soon as possible. All right. So moving on to item number eleven, adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn? And please be aware, we're walking into a hearing right after this, okay? Can we have a motion to adjourn the work session?
So moved.
Moved. Second.
Is there probably moving second and third and fourth? So I will take that as there's no objections or abstentions since every single one of you guys seconded this motion. So our work session has officially come to an end at ten thirteen P M and we are going to be moving into a public hearing right now. Melissa, put it up. There you go. So this is the agenda for the public hearing ordinance number eleven dash twenty twenty-two, admitting the code of ordinance of the city of Maranier, chapter one, the ethics, to incorporate the changes required by STELLA to local ethics ordinance regarding conflict of interest and financial disclosures and to update references to STELLA. And this, this hearing was following our Tuesday, February twenty-first, twenty-third work session. It is currently right now ten thirteen. I'm going to officially call this hearing to order. So I have Luke Chesek.
Here.
Jimmy Tarlo?
Yeah.
Jared Stoffes?
I am here.
Valerie Woodall?
Valerie, I'm here.
I, I, hey, I hear from Melissa later that I don't do this, okay? Melissa's like, you guys didn't call, roll call. All right. So seeing now five of us are here, Vice Mayor, can you please read through and do a review of the agenda, please?
Yep, number one, number one, call to order. Number two, review the agenda. Number three, public hearing regarding ordinance one. Oh gosh, number, sorry, eleven dash twenty twenty-two. Many the code of ordinance of the city of Maranier, chapter one, the ethics to incorporate changes required by state law to local ethics ordinances regarding conflicts of interest and financial disclosures and to update references to state law. Number four, adjournment.
Thank you so much. And as a point of information, this ordinance, the local ethics ordinance has been, has had its first reading, has gone to work session, first reading and second reading. It is part of the process that it will also need to go to a hearing. So during the hearing, you have three minutes to state your piece on this ordinance. If you're an individual named last name, block and city, block and street number, obviously living in the city of Maranier, right? If you represent a group, you will forfeit, the group will forfeit their ability to speak and you will have five minutes. So. Melissa, can you move it up? So this is the ordinance in front of you. And if we have anybody to speak, please put your name on the chat. If you're on Facebook, write your name on the chat and we could read your comment. If you're on the phone, please alert us that you are here. And basically, this, this ordinance will put us in in compliance with the new rules and regulations. And it's part of like a normal process the city has to do every time the rules change. And Melissa's moving it very slowly so people could see it. Okay. So Jared, is there anything on Facebook?
No comments.
Thank you so much. I do not see anything on the chat. Council, do you guys have anything to add? Or we are good. Jimmy, I see your mic open. Anything to add?
I'm good to go.
All right, Luke?
Good to go.
Jared?
Good to go.
Valerie?
Good, thank you.
Okay, so. Put it up to the, to the beginning of the page, Melissa. Thank you. So it is currently ten sixteen without any comments from Facebook, the chat, the phone or anything that has been, there has been no emails to American Council as well when it comes to this ordinance. So, okay, so, so I am going to be calling this hearing to an end at ten seventeen P M. And this, this ordinance will become in effect, it has to come into effect. Okay, I guess tonight, and please make sure you guys make yourself available to go sign and sign the legislation. Melissa, we'll send you an email.
Did we actually, did we actually vote on it?
Yeah, we already voted. This is just a hearing. So the first reading was January third, the second reading and adoption was February second. It got posted on January four and today is just a hearing to hear from the community. So there's no vote for this. So after the second, the second adoption, after the second vote, they, Melissa, I mean, Melissa has told us that we need to have a hearing in case somebody has a comment regarding the ordinance. But there's no, there's no vote. We're just here to hear the community if they have a concern about it, to give them.
That's all right.
Given two weeks after the passage of it. Yes, Melissa, is that it? Okay, so. Thank you so much. I put the agenda forward. So this hearing will, thank you, Melissa. This hearing has come to an end. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is it probably moved and seconded by three individuals, hearing no abstentions or objections. The public hearing, a foreign's eleven dash twenty twenty-two, has come to an end at ten eighteen P M. All right, staff, thank you guys so much. Council, thank you guys so much. I know it's been a long night and.
Congratulations, Mayor, in getting the rent stabilization.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate all your work and, and hard effort on this because I know we, we definitely pulled, we pulled together and as I look forward to doing more, more great work with you guys. All right, so go home, sleep well and know that we did something outstanding together today, okay? All right. Good night.
Night, everyone.
Night, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Calle.